We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. If we could go ahead and get a roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem, Bettencourt.
Here.
Councilmembers Bishop, Loa.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Alakan.
Mic's not working.
Yeah, mine isn't either.
Commissioners Fragasain.
Here.
And Betts.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
There's something going on with the buttons.
Can I move to Austin's seat?
My button doesn't work either.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, mine's stuck now.
But at least mine is on.
You can listen to me on meeting if you want.
All right, moving right along.
That's all. No, you won't, mine aren't.
We're just gonna wait a minute, try to resolve our technical difficulties.
Mine just came on.
Ours is stuck.
Mine's stuck. Oh yeah, mine's stuck now.
While he's actually working on that, why don't we go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance? If you would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then a moment of silence.
Place your right hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
In a moment, we'll be watching a cute critter video as soon as we get the buttons unstuck.
Okay, now that my mic works, I wanna make a motion to excuse Councilmember Bishop. Second.
Second. Your motion is second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
We can share this if you'd like.
Okay, yeah. So, Madam Clerk, if we could go ahead and list the observances for the month of September? Excellent, thank you so much. Oh, go.
And it's not a monthly celebration, but we are going to be honoring...
On September 16th. You guys can say it, you can say it.
Here we go. Is it the 15th? My mic's on.
September 16th.
So, we're gonna have a recognition of the passing of, or the murder of Ryan Klinkenbober on September 16th. And I believe that will be in front of the Palmdale Sheriff's Station. So if you go to their website, there should be information regarding that.
September 16th.
September 16th. All right. And now, we're gonna actually do a presentation. And I think we have Public Works to come up and do a presentation on the Chimboli Center.
Hi.
Hi!
Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Bob Simons. I'm with SVA Architects. I'm founding partner of the firm. And we're really excited to share our progress on the Chimboli Center. And let me introduce a few people here. Tubi Chang, who's our project coordinator. And Robert Playo is our Director of Design. And he's gonna walk you through the project. And if you have questions, feel free.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shorter. Thank you all for inviting us, and thank you all for attending. We're going to give you an update on the project. So, first off, just an image to remind us all of what we're looking at here. And of course, we have the Chimboli Center. We have the library. And our directive was to look at renovating both those buildings, as well as the site and the parking lot, to create a new cohesive cultural center for the city that would also help to renovate the Chimboli after the fire. So our concept is to create one larger building that will combine the Chimboli Center with the City Library, as well as reclaiming the space that is between the two buildings, as well as expanding to the location where the fountain is currently, so that we create one larger project. And this will then be a more cohesive project, so that the library, the civic centers, all combines as one. Now, because it's such a large project, what we determined is to create this in two phases. So the first phase will be the Chimboli Center renovation, along with the additions and the site work. When that is completed, we'll then be renovating the library. And that way, the library can make use of some of the completed facilities inside the Chimboli while their construction is going on. So to address this project, we of course met with all the people from the city here, but there was an extensive outreach program to the community. And you can see the different methods by which we reached out to those community members. And we were very happy that we received a lot of feedback, a lot of good comments and a lot of directions. And so we recognized that since people had been without the Chimboli Center for a long time, they were gonna really want to see value for their taxpayer dollars. So we set ourselves with three goals for this project. The first was to create multiple activity spaces and flexible meeting areas for a wide variety of groups, from as small as six to 500. We also wanted to deliver state-of-the-art infrastructure to support the facility data communications, as well as ancillary functions to help support their success. And then finally, our goal was to create a warm environment that is both light and airy, inviting, but also safe and secure. Now, as many of you recall, this is what the Chimboli Center is right now. And we and our consultants did a very thorough analysis of the existing construction to understand the condition of the structure, mechanical HVAC systems, the roof, so that we could save the best of it and change the rest of it. And as you can tell from the plan, we found that these spaces were a little bit clunky. It didn't really flow. It didn't take a great advantage of the floor space as it could. So we've created a new concept. And what we have here is our initial plan for the layout of the project on the first floor. The blue dotted line represents the extent of the existing building. So you can see, we are enclosing the breezeway that separates it from the City Library, as well as expanding it forward. Now, in looking at the plan, the areas that are shaded in green are what we call activity spaces. And you'll notice that these are of different size. They have, some of them have the ability to be combined to one another. And these will also support the library in terms of creating study rooms, areas for children's program, and future spaces which will be developed for the library, but can be used for the community as well. The gray spaces represent those ancillary function spaces, including staff areas, including storage rooms, kitchen, et cetera, as well as a very large electronic and data collection area. And then finally, the yellow are the public circulation spaces. And we wanted to start by walking you through the project and starting with those yellow spaces. The first area that people will come to is what we're calling the concourse. This is a very tall, three-story-high space that will be glazed on two sides to allow it to be a very light, open, and airy space. It will have a grand staircase that will lead us to the second-floor ballrooms. But this space is not only used for circulation, but can also be used for art displays, for activities, and as a pre-function space supporting the ballroom. In terms of security, during business hours, only one set of doors will be opened, and they will lead directly toward a reception security station. That security person will have the ability to direct people to the new entry to the City Library, which will be immediately to the right, as well as directing people to other spaces within the floor. And one thing we wanted to take into consideration is what happens when there's an evening function and the other spaces aren't in use? Well, we'll design the ability to close off the corridors so that no one can be wandering back into spaces where they shouldn't. As you recall, the second floor had the large manzanita ballroom. Now, this was, also has, a large stage that really was underutilized. So it was determined that we really didn't need that. It also had an interior staircase, which took up a lot of room. Additionally, it had a full-service hospitality-style kitchen, which is really not what the norms of the industry are today for supporting ballrooms. So we came up with a new plan. Once again, the blue dotted line represents the existing condition. And so you can see that in addition to the single-story that we had expanding into the breezeway between the library and the building, we're also expanding the ballroom, so that it takes up that much more space. When you come up the grand staircase, you'll be on a lobby area that is a pre-function space and will also look into the three-story lobby and out toward the city. So it'll be a really wonderful experience. From that space, you'll have the ability to go into the ballrooms. Now, we've designed it so the ballrooms can be subdivided into three individual spaces. This way, we can accommodate any sort of number. What we're showing right here now are tables and chairs for 370 people with a dance floor and a portable stage. Additionally, instead of one gigantic kitchen, we're creating two smaller service kitchens that'll be heat and warm kitchens, along with a new freight elevator to supplement and serve those areas and replace the existing dumbwaiter. And then finally, we have very generous restrooms, which are gonna be required for the size of this ballroom. Because what we wanted to show you was how we could use this space in so many different ways. The first one I mentioned was 370 seats. But if you take away the dance floor and the stage, you can easily, say, for an awards dinner, accommodate 440 people. But then, you could have three concurrent, different programs going on in these ballrooms, seating 150, 90, and 170. And then finally, if you have, say, a town hall meeting, you could have 500 people, which is a significant number of people in this space. Part of our directive was also to consider the parking area and the exterior spaces. Now, if you recall, as you approached the existing Chimboli, there are ramps, there are stairs, there's a fountain. It's pretty well broken up. And we felt there is a better opportunity to create more usable space for tables and chairs and for gatherings, so that when you're, say, having a pre-function space in the main concourse lobby, that can spill out onto that outdoor terrace area. As well, we are going to be creating spaces in the rear of the building, facing Sierra Way, that can have a large balcony on the second floor. As well, as on the lower level, we will have a secured outdoor area. For example, if we have a children's program from the library, they can also make access to that outdoor space. This will also receive planting. Yes, it will have a short set of stairs from the parking area, as well as a handicap ramp. And our scope will also involve renovating part of the parking area as part of Phase One. In addition to the comments we received about how the space should function, we received public comments about how the building should look and what the vision was for the future. And the vision was to create a modern, forward-thinking building that really represented the future of Palmdale. It wasn't backward-looking. So the response that we're providing is to create a modern building that will have a glass and translucent panel main concourse lobby, which will be very inviting and daylighting during the daytime, but in the evening will be lighted and act as almost like a glowing lantern directing people to the project. From the Sierra Way side, what we are doing is creating decorative screens, which will let in light and air to the rear outdoor areas of the building, but will also retain security. So in going through the project, what we have done in terms of meeting those three goals is we've provided over 13 separate meeting areas or activity rooms. We've created a number of ancillary spaces to support the project. And what we believe that we have created is a light and airy and very modern and forward-thinking Chimboli Center for the future of Palmdale. And we'd be happy to take any questions.
My mic is not working.
Uh-oh. Yeah, no, it's not. There we go.
May I?
Yeah.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Please bear with us as we deal with our technical difficulties. Appreciate your patience. Thank you for your presentation and all your work on this really is sort of centerpiece of our city. I think so many people have been waiting because it really has been the only larger space for our community to use for various event programming. One thing that I didn't hear you mention that I think is a really amazing design piece that you included is an outdoor event space.
Yes.
In the rear, maybe if you wanna point that out. Right there.
Right, so that will be a large terrace area that you can access from the ballrooms. And then it will have screening on it, so protect it, but still let in light and air and view.
So that's the second floor. And then the first floor also has outdoor.
That's correct.
Area, which it didn't previously have.
Right, that one, it will be off those function rooms. There's a reception reservation room number two, and then the library activity room, which we saw was a great space for kids because we planned to have a sink in there and allow them activities, but then allow them to be safely outdoors in that space.
Yeah, and we've got, you know, great weather. Barring the extreme heat or cold, we usually have great weather.
Or the sandstorm.
So outdoors is always a nice option. Question, for the ballroom, you gave us four options in terms of capacity. What was the previous capacity?
Pardon? Oh. I think Rhonda said it was 300?
Does that sound right? Three? So we're increased, so the four options you've given us, Option A, B, C, and D, so there's 370, 150, 440, and 500 seats?
Right.
And the previous was 300?
Approximately. And you know that's really up to your caterers, in terms of how they, you know, sometimes they squish people at the... These are spaced-out tables and chairs. So you could probably fit in more if everybody squinched in a little bit.
Got it. And then, in terms of outreach, you said that you did, I mean, you did significant outreach. You sent out, I saw 32,000 emails. You included your information in our newsletter that has a readership of over 40,000 of our residents. But 200 people responded to your survey. Did any of the, I mean, our population is 170,000. Did any, did you get responses from any of the 32,000 emails or any inquiries with the newsletter? Anything else?
I think Carrie can respond to that most better than us.
And can I ask, which of the council members you conferred with?
Confferred with in what regards?
Outreach. Outreach to the council?
And then, before you, just so you can get it all in one, was the outreach done in bilingual? Was it bilingual? Was there any outreach done in Spanish?
The website is, you can select a language on the website and the survey, yes.
Great.
And looking, I did a quick look back at some of our other programming surveys. Certainly, we get larger feedback on projects that affect more people. The cultural center isn't something that everyone uses. It's kind of, some people don't even know we have a water park. So we really focused in on our user groups. We contacted all the groups that have had a reservation in the ballroom in the past, all the nonprofit groups that have regularly used it. All of our Parks and Recreation customers had flyers and posters everywhere. If it didn't make it to your offices, I apologize. It should have. It was posted on social media and websites and such. It is still available. The QR code is still up for anyone who would like to participate.
I don't know about the rest of the council. I don't mean to interrupt you, but this is very frustrating to me that this is such a big event.
Sure.
It costs a lot of money.
Sure.
The last thing I heard from our previous city manager was that they wanted to turn it into staff offices. And I said absolutely not.
Okay.
At that point, the conversation stopped, never heard another word, until today.
I don't know if Sal has...
I don't know about the rest of you. Have you had any input? So, I'm a little overwhelmed right now by seeing this for the first time. I'm interested in the cost. And I'm very concerned about soundproofing that side of the building where the railroad tracks are because we all know that we've had events in there and you've had to stop talking while the train goes by.
Yes.
Because it was so loud.
Definitely something we've talked about. And even with the ballroom being able to divide into three spaces, there's soundproofing there to allow those functions. If you remember, any event that you had on the second floor, you could hear it on the bottom floor.
Absolutely.
It definitely, they did a great job of assessing the structure and where we're lacking today's requirements and full confidence that we're gonna have a much better building.
And you're gonna be able to bifurcate it so that when there's an evening event, if someone rents it out to have a wedding or whatever, that people from the library can't get in?
Correct.
They're gonna cut it off.
Correct. Just as our previous use, we could seal the first floor and make sure that people weren't wandering in spaces that they couldn't.
And am I seeing only one public elevator?
There's one public elevator and then one service elevator in the back. They're doing, they've got the experts to do the math on that, but the service elevator is the same location as previously. I'm sorry, the people elevator. And then we have a service one in the back for receiving that it can be accessed from the outside and takes equipment directly upstairs. So that'll be a great help to the ballroom.
Will the public elevator be bigger than the one we have now? Because it was like, four or five people could get in it and it was really, really slow.
Currently, the space for the elevator would remain the same, but the elevator itself may not. It definitely would be upgraded. Also, to help with a lot of people coming up, we've designed a staircase that's 10 feet wide.
I'm handicapped.
Right.
Stairs mean nothing to me.
Okay, well...
Escalator, maybe?
We will be definitely upgrading the elevator.
Was there consideration of an escalator to alleviate some of the traffic coming down?
It would be wonderful. It's just a very expensive proposition.
I mean, this project is already expensive. I mean, we haven't gotten there. That's my last question.
Yes.
Cost and funding sources. I know that's the big question on our mind because this is over 80 million, right?
Escalators would be wonderful if we could afford them. And we'd be more than happy to if the budget would allow.
If we're gonna spend 80 or however many million, we're gonna get it right. We're gonna get it right. And we're gonna make it accessible for everybody.
Yeah, definitely.
If our Mayor Pro Tem is gonna have difficulty getting to the top level, that's a problem.
Great. And we definitely would want to design whatever you feel comfortable.
And the reason, Carrie, thank you for mentioning that the website is in Spanish. But I don't know, I see them all the time. Every weekend, Saturday and Sunday. Beautiful girls with their entire, the quinceañeras. They're out there taking photos in Ponce de Land Square. So I know that if this venue is available, it's a natural nexus. They come here for the pictures and then they would book our, it would be booked constantly. Because I know that this community is really needing and wanting for a large, beautiful, open space so that they can have these kinds of events. So that's why I specifically asked, have we done outreach in the Latino community? Because at least, I would say at least five every Saturday and Sunday. You guys know. I mean, everybody knows. If you come on the weekend, they're there. And these girls are so beautiful. And we, I'm a mom, but we spend a lot of money. They're like mini weddings.
Oh, yeah. And that's why we wanted to provide different sizes so that, you know, on this lower level, that large meeting room can seat 90 people with a kitchen off it, and that spills out onto the plaza itself. So in addition to the ballroom spaces, we have others. And then you can see the different reservation rooms. Those two rooms could be combined together. So we really kept in mind the diverse functions that these could serve, not just Christmas parties, but quinceañeras, confirmation parties, birthday parties, retirement parties.
Yeah, my point is outreach to the Latino community in our city is important because they will be utilizing this space. I have no doubt about that. And then, so timeline. There was no reference in terms of timeline. And so those are three big questions. Timeline, cost, and funding sources.
And that's why I'm the designer. I'll turn it off to my boss.
Thanks.
Timeline, it's essential. It's, we're today about 75% through design development. And so we have another half a month or so to 100% design development. Four months for construction documents. And then the plan check process, roughly two and a half months. It really depends on the city, right? In moving that forward. And construction, probably a year and a half of construction. And that's the nice part.
Is that for Phase One expansion? So you noted Phase One renovation, Phase One expansion, and then Phase Two.
Right.
The year and a half, is that completion of both phases?
No, it's Phase One, which does include an expansion of the library that makes that connection to the Chimboli. We thought that that was very important as part of the first phase.
And so I'm asking, but my guess is that since you're 75% done with design and you've got one month left for design, does that mean that we're foreclosed as councilmembers and as the community now to suggest design changes?
No, that's actually what the DD phase is for. So any kind of feedback is great. Like, we just heard about the elevator or escalator. It's all good feedback for us, and we can make adjustments.
So maybe this is a question to our interim city manager. How, in the course of the next month, before we reach 100% design completion, will we as councilmembers and the community have final opportunity to submit suggestions or comments on this design?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. This was step one. You guys have been asking for this presentation for some time now. This is kind of our introduction to the community. We hope that the community comes out, sees this presentation. It's out there, and we're gonna go out again and have more outreach for the community, outreach to the council. We want to get your intake on what we have, or your... Your, sorry, excuse me. Your input on what we have going already, and go from there. So our goal is to have this introduction of this project and then take your guys' input and adjust as needed.
And is that gonna happen over the next month? Or once design is completed at 100%, then we do more outreach and then we come back and pay for additional design changes?
The outreach stage is next. So, we have this presentation, we outreach, we go back with our design team, and we make necessary adjustments if needed.
So...
Yeah, we encourage feedback. I mean, that's what our firm's all about.
These aren't numbered. So, on the one that says proposed landscape design, we've got the outdoor little terrace balcony right here. Is that able to be closed off for security so that people can't go in and sleep there at night?
Oh, yes, that was really key.
Okay. And then, in the past, when we've had these projects presented to the public, we put them on big poster boards and we've sent them in the lobby or some public space where people can come up and look at it in person.
Yeah, we're happy to do that.
If we could do that and make sure that the public has access to that so they can see each slide individually and up close?
Where's the best place to display it, do you think?
You'd have to ask Sal that, because normally it would be the Chimboli Center.
I mean, you could put it in front of the city hall, right here. And then maybe some way of creating a weatherproof poster board.
The library would be probably a good place.
Just as long as they can see it up close, that would be great.
Be happy to.
Okay, this is the big question that nobody, we've raised it about five times, cost.
Cost. Well, the Phase One costs roughly today, basically, $21 million. $15 million for the base construction for the Chimboli and the Phase One, plus about $4 to $5 million of soft costs. There is some contingency in it because there's some early phase, so we have about 15% contingency in that number. But it's a good conservative number today.
Is that Phase One renovation and expansion?
Of the Chimboli, that's correct.
Okay, so $21 million, 4.5 in soft costs and contingency built in.
Yeah, roughly.
And then the Phase Two?
The Phase Two is probably, that would be mostly the library, right? So that's roughly about $15 million, or $10 million, I'm sorry.
Why did I hear the numbers were so high before? Maybe I was hearing bad numbers from a former city manager.
Yeah, so, I mean, the total amount roughly between Phase One and Two is 40 million. You named it, yeah.
And funding sources?
We're currently using ARPA funding and general funds. Measure, thanks to the taxpayers, Measure PD.
So ARPA's like expiring, right?
That's correct.
So how much of ARPA and how much of Measure PD taxpayer dollars?
I believe we have $7 million in ARPA, if I'm correct, Janelle. Five, five, $5 million. The rest would be general fund and PD funds.
So 5 million in federal money and then, what is that, 20, so 20 million in tax, Measure PD money? All Measure PD, not AV?
It's a mixture of all the general funds, so it'll be mixed in with all those funding sources.
All the more reason why, if the taxpayers are paying for this, we need to hear from them. So let's do as much as we can to get as much outreach and input, feedback, no matter what we, we've got to do Spanish language, whatever languages we've got to do, community outreach. We should be going to neighborhood watch meetings, we should be doing all of that. If we're going to spend 20 million of our taxpayer dollars on this and it's for our community for the long term, we should be hearing their feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I have a question of Megan, actually. Did you, could you come up, please? Oh, don't go too far. So Megan, I could be wrong about this, but I thought there was kind of a design that we wanted, that we followed generally for the city. It's kind of an Italian-Spanish kind of a motif. I know that was adopted some years ago, but have we moved away from that?
So the general plan and the zoning ordinance allow a lot of flexibility in design. So you just have to use general desert colors, there's no specific, you know, you don't have to do modern, you don't have to do Spanish because we want a variation in design throughout the city.
Okay, that's great. Were you consulted on the design of the front elevation on this?
We have taken a look at it and obviously, as our city manager mentioned, it is still a work in progress. So we'll continue to work with the team to make sure that it meets the standards that we've set for the city.
Okay. Because, come on back up. I don't know, as I look at it, I mean, I understand you're trying to accomplish a modern look to the elevation on both sides, but I'm not sure. I mean, just looking at it, this is my first impression on this.
Yeah, that's fun.
You hadn't published this before, right? To me, it looks like a courthouse.
He's a lawyer.
Oh, that would, that would make sense.
And I don't know that it accomplished, you know, the kind of look that I think that the Chimbole Community Center, I mean, first of all, he was the first mayor of the city of Palmdale. And frankly, without his leadership and the leadership of the other people that were involved in the formulation of the city, the development of the city, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have a city.
Yeah.
Right?
Sure.
We might still be an unincorporated area, part of the greater Los Angeles County scheme or part of Lancaster, who knows, right? But that leadership, that vision is what brought the city forward. And this just looks too sterile to me. I may be the only one here that feels that way.
Part of it, and maybe we need to do more photorealistic rendering, but part of it, it doesn't express like all the lighting, this is translucent panels, this is a much more transparent building, you know, which really will show a lot of the activities that are occurring inside and so forth. And so, you know, we can enhance that to make sure that you get that right impression.
So it looks like a courthouse to you? I taught at the college for 21 years and it looks like some of our old college buildings. So it's like every other building. At least that one, on the big screen, it has more color than we have on our little screens here.
I think maybe to Mayor Pro Tem's point, it just looks like a building. It doesn't look like it has any unique community-specific characteristics, like something Palmdale, maybe the color, maybe some landscape additions or some artwork. I don't know, it just looks like a building.
Yeah, no, that's good feedback.
Even our sheriff's station, which is law enforcement, right? You get, you take a look at it, there's kind of a sense of friendliness to it.
Okay.
You know, it's not, you know, hey, this is the law.
Sure.
Rather, it's part of the community. Part of the community.
We certainly want that. I mean, the challenge always is to distinguish it as a public building, but at the same time, like you said, express what's within it, you know? And so that's, we always find that as a challenge for a civic building.
It is a challenge and I understand.
And then plus, the feedback we received early on that they wanted this to be a catalyst for future changes to the city.
Well, we could have made it look like a spacecraft, too.
Yeah, it's true.
So, I mean, the future, I mean, this is after all aerospace value.
Yeah.
But in my mind.
Yeah, let us work on that.
Is what the original people who founded this city, and we just went, you know, we just went, passed our birthday here recently. But Larry Chimbole was our first mayor and he was a visionary who sought to it that the city of Palmdale should.
What might be interesting, since it's a cultural building, is to develop some kind of exterior, I'd say like a rendering of the city, giving it some history, right? Because this is your cultural building.
There was maybe some murals or something along those lines.
Yeah, exactly, that's something we can enhance on the design.
Now, in the past, we had the stage and I know that it takes up a lot of room and it's not the way we do things anymore. But in the past, we've had performances and we've had bands that play in there. Normally, a band is usually, even if it's a dancer, if it's some kind of a presentation, the band would be higher. Now, we can always provide for that.
Sure.
By getting temporary heightening kind of an elevated area. But what about when people, for example, if we have four choric dancers or we have some other performers, where would they be doing the changing? Are you providing for that?
Yeah, you can, ultimately, we can develop today as large a platform as you want for dancing and for drama. We can also provide theatrical lights, so in the future, you can effectively build a temporary stage under what is theatrical lights and then when the stage is taken away, it can be opened up for a larger space.
Okay, but I'm talking about when the performers change and they change from one costume to another.
That's a good point, yeah, that could be done up there.
Probably the best location for that would be if we use some of the ground floor functions. If you'll notice, we have these smaller study rooms that are called, that were specifically originally designed just for the library, but are, they're basically a small conference room. They could easily be used for change rooms so that we have a function, so we don't have specific things that are designated only, say, for change rooms, but also have the ability to be used for other functions like study rooms or small meeting rooms. And we have four of those that are located right next to the restroom, so that could help those as well.
Is that the, that's the ground floor there?
Correct. On the second floor, what we really, the goal was to optimize ballroom space. So we could, for example, if you'll notice, we have big areas that are designated right now for bar, kitchenette, and storage. Well, we could use some of that space for change room if it was so desired.
Yeah, I mean, at times it's so, that's what the building has been used for in the past.
Yeah, that's really pertinent information that we would really welcome from the council at this time.
Right.
Okay. Anyone else have comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So how do we get any additional feedback? You're going to go to the. Go again.
So we're going to be moving on to item number five. This is going to be public comments for the Housing Authority. But before we move any farther forward, city manager, are there any items that you want to pull from either the Housing Authority consent calendar or from the council consent calendar?
Mayor Pro Tem, yes, we'd like to pull item 7.6 and continue it to a later date, please.
7.6, okay.
Motion to approve the remainder?
No, 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 we're in housing, no, we're good.
Did you say you were pulling something?
7.6.
All right, so for the city clerk, could please play the public comment code? And this is right now only for the Housing Authority consent calendar.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you for that. Before we start with public comments, commissioners, is there anybody that wants to pull an item from the Housing Authority? No? Okay, okay, we'll go ahead and call for public comments then.
Mayor Pro Tem and council, we have no public comments on this item.
Okay, then I'll make a, I'll go ahead and close public comments. Do we have a motion?
Can we get a staff report on the, on, wait, where, on six, there's two items on our housing. Six one, six two is just the minute, so six one, please.
We'll have Sophia come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council, we're Housing Authority commissioners. The item before you is, on the second. Item 6.1 is to approve the Housing Authority of the City of Palmdale's 2425 Annual Report per the Health and Safety Code, Section 34328 and 34328-1, and authorize the executive director, they're designated to submit the report. The report describes the activities and is required of the Housing Authority of the City of Palmdale, which includes any activities they have, the assumption of housing assets from the former redevelopment agency, the management of the Housing Authority-owned properties, which are the mobile home parks, and the Housing Authority for properties of 291 units. Also, their, the mortgage, multifamily mortgage revenue bonds refinanced in 2003 and 2005, that the Housing Authority is current in all its payment obligations. For the multifamily housing revenue bonds from 2015 that were used to require and rehab the 290 units of affordable rental housing, which is La Quinta, Park Vista, Summerwood Apartments, and Impressions Senior Housing, is current in all its payment obligations. We also report all the activities we have, which includes any agreements and covenants that we have entered into. So any amendments to any agreements, such as the First Amendment Salvation Army, amended to add a budget line item for an administrative line item, for LDM and Kaiser Marston to extend those agreements, for implementation agreements with Together California to look at their period of performance, 11, 12, 13, and 14, 13th implementation agreements with Homes for Families for their scheduled performance, looking at the affordable housing costs, so any changes we've made to their agreements. An agreement with Nash Construction for ongoing general contract minor construction services for Palmdale, Fourth Street Palmdale LP for the Transit Village. And these are all, the larger items have come before the Housing Authority Board. Let's see, Advancing Communities Together for the Affordable Housing Duplex Project. For the sale, we've had an agreement, listing agreement for the sale of the Fourth Street House, which was, used to be the Gabriel's House. So we're bringing it back to being affordable, to an eligible household, an affordable housing. An amendment with Fraser Capital to extend it and exercise the option. An affordable housing agreement Victory Outreach to lease the property at 513 East Avenue Q4. This is the four unit that came before you and will be rehabilitated and be housing for formerly homeless families. Good Guard Security, Absolute International Security, and then Veterans Purchase Assistance Loan Program or VPAL program. These are the loans for the veterans for the Homes for Family Project, which we had recently, six households that just had their key ceremony and they closed their escrows last week. So those were, a large number of those, I think it was about 19 addendums and loan agreements. Also, we have other required information where we will give suggestions of what legislation would be, should be considered, in our opinion, that were, which includes addressing the impacts of accessory dwelling units by right on sewer infrastructure, traffic and parking in residential zones as an unfunded mandate because they are able to put a large number in a neighborhood. And so we would like to be able to address some of those long-term effects. So, staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, thank you for your staff report. Part of the reason why I wanted a staff report was so that everybody could hear all of the wonderful things that the Housing Authority does. I mean, we sort of go through consent calendars really quickly. We've got two items on our Housing Authority agenda today, but all of which you spoke about, the veterans' homes agreements, the Together California agreement so that we can, we're building housing for foster children to keep siblings together, and reunification. I mean, there's so many things that we're doing in, under the Housing Authority that I think is important to remind folks exactly what it does. But I did have substantive questions, so this is, also includes, it's only, it's a very short report, even though I think it should probably be a little bit more exhaustive, but it's three and a half pages for all that work. But we manage three mobile home parks, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we've talked a couple times a year, I think, about sort of the management of these mobile home parks and we've asked for report backs about, because we've received a lot of complaints about sort of maintenance issues and things, security issues, lighting, a variety of things. I don't know if the council remembers, but we've had pretty colorful conversations with crowded roomfuls of people concerned about the management of our mobile home park. Can you give us an update on where that stands? Because in here it says that they're going to continue to be managed by the same company.
Currently, we have an agreement with Newport Pacific, who is managing them, and anytime that there are issues that come up, whether it's with security, they do reach out to the management of the security and have those addressed immediately. We even had changed the security company through an RFP process. Or we had, we gained the security company through an RFP process and when that needed, was examined and overall, the city felt that there needed to be a change, that change was implemented and to the improvement of the security. We are working with having the residents submit their full, instead of being self-certified, self-cert, thank you, self-certification of their income, we're asking for documentation so that we can once again bring in community development block grant funds and to use, to utilize in doing some of the improvements that are needed. So we are taking steps to look at the different items that have been reported. And as we've reported when we've met with the residents, because we're meeting with the residents on a regular basis, when we change securities at the end of the year, we have talked to them about what lighting they wanted changed. That has been implemented in a step-by-step manner, but the ones that were, where there was the most security issues, were taken care of right away. So we are being responsive through our management company and to implement those changes that are being requested.
Great, thank you for that. Just wanted to let everybody know we were on it as soon as they brought it to our attention and you guys took care of it, so thank you.
Andrea, you are correct, there was a time and we had a lot of people in here and from multiple mobile home parks. And they had a list of grievances and I do hope that all of those were addressed, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thanks, and then lastly, the last page, it says other, this is the legislative stuff?
Yes.
It says Housing Authority recommends legislation to address state of California Department of Finance refusal to use redevelopment property tax funds. Can you, just explain to me what that is and what you're suggesting that we support?
That is part of the AB 26, the demise of redevelopment. And as part of the demise of redevelopment, the Housing Authority did take over the housing assets of the redevelopment agency. So one of the items that was requested of the state of California is that some of that funding be provided for administration of those. some of that funding be provided for administration of those...of those assets, because that was not provided. They...when they took the funding away and had us...and we accepted the assets and responsibility for the assets, that was...that funding for administration of those assets wasn't brought forward. So, it's something that we had requested.
Do you have any idea, maybe interim city manager knows, what is the sort of estimated average annual administrative cost for all of this?
The salaries and benefits is probably part of that, and so that's the part of the staffing of...I think it runs up to about $500,000.
A year?
Yeah. But that is in a...because part of our...part of our funding goes to administering the assets, but it's a part of the funding also goes to the different compliance monitoring of those assets, but also to new...to utilize in funding for new affordable housing projects, such as the Fourth Street Link Transit Village Project and the Q4...513 Q4 rehabilitation of the existing four-unit building. So, there's...it's broad.
Got it.
Broad what can be covered.
In a nutshell, the state created a mandate and left us with a half a million-dollar bill. Got it. Thank you. Absolutely. Oh, here, you use mine.
So, just to clarify, we have been waiting for a meeting with our residents. We promised for a meeting before the next increase, and we've had that second increase. We've talked to Lisa, she was gonna talk...
We had...I think we had a meeting.
We have not had a meeting.
Not...we had the meeting at the end of the year for...but it was more for the security. So, we'll put that...
No, we didn't have a meeting with security. It was raised, but anyways, moving forward, we brought that to Lisa, that the residents were promised a meeting before the next increase. So, if we can...
We'll look into getting that meeting scheduled.
Yeah. Thank you.
I thank you for raising that. All the more reason why it's great to have community members as commissioners on this housing authority, because we are not on the ground level, and we would not have known that. I remember during that conversation, we were very specific about the meeting with the residents prior to the increase, and we talked about giving them, you know, opportunities to provide feedback, different ways of communicating with these folks, because they were coming in here and saying, "Well, our rent was increased, but we didn't know." And so, we all agreed, there has to be very specific and concerted efforts to notify and provide opportunities for these folks to give feedback for the increase. So, I'm saddened that it didn't happen. When did the increase go into place?
I believe August 1st.
August. It just went in. So, there's nothing outstanding that's really concerning.
We're on the second year of the increase, though. We just got our second increase, so...
Second increase.
Yeah, we got...
You guys approved the first one, though.
You approved the first one, and we automatically had a next one this year. So, we've now had our second increase since the approval by the commission.
Okay. Can we get a meeting with the community folks ASAP?
Yes, ma'am.
Please?
I'm good for it.
Yeah, we will do so.
Thank you.
Sophia.
Sir.
I'm always pleased to see how much information you carry on this very vital issue to Palmdale, which is obviously housing and housing for low-income and then unhoused as well, which are really, really critical issues. So, just want to thank you for your depth of knowledge and being there for us.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second that for sure. We...you're a huge asset to the city, and you are appreciated. Does anybody else have any comments on housing authority items? Okay, how about a motion?
No, no, we're good. Do you want to move?
No, let the commissioners move.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Consent.
Consent calendar for the housing.
We have a motion in a second?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Start voting.
Oh, never mind. All righty then.
No, but just do it.
Motion passes.
All right. And with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the housing authority. Thank you for your service. We appreciate you guys being here. So, now we're going to move on to item number seven, the council consent calendar, and we're going to start with a call for public comments. Do we need to reread the public comment statement?
No.
Okay.
No, ma'am.
All right. So, council, does anybody want to pull an item off of the consent calendar?
7.8 and 7.9.
7.8 and 7.9. Anyone else? We already have, I think, the city manager pulled 7.6. Okay, could I get...
There was no public comment, then?
None of those items.
Reopen on the consent, though you did it on the housing authority, but not on regulars.
Right. I asked if we had to read...
We don't have anybody?
No, 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 we haven't got there yet. First, we pulled the items, so we're not going to comment on 7.6, 7.8, well...
No, 7.8, 7.9.
We're going to talk about 7.8 and 9. 7.6 got taken off. Okay. So, if anybody want to do public comments on the consent calendar, with the exception of 7.6? Well, we pulled 7.6 off.
We have a public comment from Michelle Lee, and it's on 7.9. 7.6 was pulled, so that comment will be made.
I'm sure I don't...I'm not reading this correctly or don't know how to read it, but on 7.9, it says that they'd like to get another $450,000 for the Bright Life Designs for the lighting decorations. Is that like a Christmas thing, right? Is that...okay, so we've had groups do it before for $5,000, so I just want to know why...why they need an extra $450,000 for that event.
We'll probably ask that question in a few minutes.
Thank you. Other public comment?
No further public comments. Do we want to make a motion in a second on the balance?
Yes.
Go through the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? We have Marcia. Let's wait.
You didn't close...you didn't close public comment?
No, not yet.
No, no, not yet. We're just gonna just do the balance real quick and then move forward.
Is that a voice vote or a...
No, we're gonna actually vote through the system. Start voting.
That's okay. Hang on, don't start yet, Marcia.
One more?
I thought we might ask Marcia what it is that she wanted to talk about.
I don't understand what you're doing.
Oh, why don't we just pull that? Rescind the vote. Let her talk.
She may be commenting on one of the items that we're about to move on.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't...are you voting or something?
So, we pulled 7.8 and 7.9 to discuss, and the rest, we were going to approve the council calendar remains.
Okay, so you're...7, 8, and 7, 9 are still available for public comment, but for some reason, you have, before the public comment...
Yes.
Said you're for sure going to speak about those.
Yes.
But normally, you would do that after the...
May I...just because there was confusion, I think I'd like to make a motion to rescind that vote so that we can allow for the continued public comment on the entire consent calendar.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, we got a motion in a second?
Second, voice count.
Everything is open for discussion on the consent calendar.
So, that vote has been rescinded on the balance of the consent calendar, so everybody can comment on anything on the consent calendar, and we have not voted on it.
Except for 7.6.
7.6 has been pulled for...it's going to be continued to another day.
I appreciate that, because I had never heard it done the way you were doing it. And because you...after we all talked, then you go around and say, "Do you want to pull anything?" You know, and then talk forever. But, okay. Okay, so also, 7.9, the young lady brought up a good point. All I can say is, I truly enjoyed the Christmas lights last year. They were fantastic. They were great for families. Somehow, I hope that it works out that we have the same, if not better, this coming year, because it really was fantastic. Also, on 7.9, we all know is an aquatics issue, so it has to do with Dry Town and the new thrill ride that they hope to put out. So, I'm hoping that you'll approve that. I think it does need to continue to evolve, Dry Town, and we do need things to bring the teenagers in, maybe during the day. They do like the night ones. I went to one one time, one of the night ones. I...one time. But daytime, to maybe kind of get some little bit older ones into the water park, I think it would be a great addition. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. I am closing public comments now. Council, we are now going to take a vote on the remainder of the consent calendar items.
May I pull 7.13, just because I just want to get a staff report on it?
713?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we can approve the balance. I'm happy to move the balance of the consent calendar, which leaves 7.8, 7.9, and 7.13 remaining.
Correct. All right.
Second.
We got a motion in a second? Let's call for the vote.
Start voting.
Motion passes.
Okay. So, on to 7.8.
I have a quick question. The reason I pulled it.
No problem.
What did it cost to have this art created in the first place?
That's a really good question. I don't recall that answer, quite honestly. We received grant funds through, I think it was SoCal Recycle Grant, and it was through Ben Lucha that he received these funds. So, he knew of an artist that did work with those recycled products, and so that's kind of where it all had come from.
Okay. It was grants, and it was an expense, but we don't know how much it is.
I don't know offhand what the grant was, I'm sorry. It was...
It's going to cost $1,000 to decommission it? Oh, does somebody have the answer?
George, you don't know, do you?
I believe the cost for the installation was $70,000 or $2,000.
$70,000.
George. George, we're just talking about back home. You don't know the cost for back home.
For that specific...
No. Okay. So, no, we...I'm sorry, we don't. It was grant-funded through the environmental technologies before the public art program existed, so I just don't have that information.
But it's still, even though it comes from grant money, we're still concerned with
Of course.
With the expenditure.
Of course, of course.
We have to be responsible for that.
Of course.
And it's going to cost $1,000 to remove it.
The removal is...will be done with our Public Works team, and I don't know that there'd be a cost associated with that.
Okay. Was there any valuation of the longevity of this item at the time? I mean...
Well, at the time, as I mentioned, we didn't have a formal public art program where materials and longevity and maintenance plans are a part of those projects. It was...it was something that we had our very first project. So, back in 2014, and it really...the materials that it was made of just did not withstand our very harsh weather. We've attempted to repair it in 2018, I believe, with some additional welding, and it's just continued to fail. Unfortunately, that's part of our being outdoors in our harsh weather and the fragile elements that the artist had selected. It's just not something that's repairable and actually has some safety concerns as a part of it.
So, apparently now, we do have a process for evaluating the longevity, the durability, the...that is going to withstand the elements out here?
Right.
And that's something we have in place now because of our entire arts program.
Correct. Yes, that is taken into consideration when we select art pieces. Certainly, things living outdoors don't last forever, but we are taking a harder look at those materials to make sure that we're making an investment that's going to last as long as it can. We do have a sculpture planned for the transportation center, which is forecasted to be done in August of 26th. It'll go in one of the roundabouts there to add an additional art element.
Okay. But none of this is going to be preserved, of this particular art piece?
No, and the leaves are really the only pieces that the artist did. The rest of it, in fact, our maintenance team fabricated the base of it. We contacted the artist. She's not interested in the remaining pieces, so we just plan to remove it.
So, it's just going to be trashed? We can't recover it for any other purpose?
No, and unfortunately, that...the artist's rights protect...are protected, and it needs to stay in its state. It can't be pieced out. So, we'll work with Public Works to figure out where...how we need to safely dispose of it.
Well, I'm gratified to hear that we have something in place that will...
Absolutely. We knew this day was coming. We've been monitoring it, so we do have another sculpture coming.
Okay. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Yeah, we're all big advocates. We love our public art. They add such value to our community. So, we don't take the decommissioning of these pieces lightly. But again, you noted, this is...it's become a public safety hazard. It's been there for 12 years. It's got glass components...
Yes, ma'am.
That are shards and things that could be dangerous potentially for anybody who's walking around, and that is a huge concern for us. We also, just so that people who are concerned about the decommissioning of art, we contacted the artist and asked him, and he declined to claim the sculpture. And so, really, it's a matter of public safety. And so, I just thank you for acknowledging it, and it's hard for us to do.
Absolutely.
But it's something that we've got it.
I think it's just his time, that we're at the end of the road, unfortunately, but it is an unfortunate time, part of the project. We do need to kind of look at safety and pull things out of public service when necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. And don't leave, because now we have 7.9.
Yes. Christmas is coming. We haven't even finished summer.
Will this vote on that one? This one's different. Can we vote on 7.8?
We'll take them both together.
We'll do them together.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
You want to do a vote?
Take them both together. They're both Parks and Rec related, so.
Shall I go ahead, or do you want to vote?
We're going to go ahead and call for the vote for 7.9, or 7.8. Just to make it easy.
No problem.
I'll move 7.8.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? Let's call for the vote.
Start voting.
Motion passes.
Okay, so 7.8 has passed. Now, we'll do 7.9, just to make it easier that way.
Okay. Just a...
Again, the question there is, first of all, yes, the display for the holidays last year was fabulous, and I have nothing to complain about there, but I do have a question as to...apparently, the budget is being increased by $124,000, and I know that there's going to be additional presentation. Can you detail some of that?
Of course.
As to what we're getting for that $124 in addition to the existing contract?
Of course. So, moving forward, this will allow for three additional light displays. We will have a...two Christmas displays, approximately $150,000 in cost each. We'll be expanding the Christmas displays to have some additional elements around the city hall and council chambers areas, just to broaden the holiday feel a bit. And then, we also, in celebration of the country's 250th birthday in July, we plan to have a 4th of July-themed, birthday-themed display at Ponce de Lon leading up to the country's birthday, just to kind of add some additional excitement for this next summer. So, that display for the holiday...for the July 4th is about $110,000, and then the Christmas is $150 each. And we do have a little bit of contingency built in. Part of that number also is they store our large Christmas tree. It's stored in an air-conditioned warehouse where it's going to be maintained, and they also repair any of the lights and things that need to be repaired in the off-season. Unfortunately, we lost a sleigh last summer. They replaced that. So, they really do a really, really great job of providing commercial-grade lighting for us that's withstanding our weather and wind and craziness that happens, and it really was well-received by the community last year. We're also adding visits with Santa. We'll be doing a movie and at the tree lighting ceremony, so we'll be adding live music. So, some additional features that will go along with the Christmas display. We noticed a lot of people coming out in the evenings and just having their own family time, so we thought we would supplement that with a few additional activities.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So, I noted that it's...this is funding...the funding source for this is Measure AV Funds, our special events.
Yes, ma'am.
Subcategory out of Measure AV taxpayer dollars. Love Christmas, obviously, you know, very patriotic, Fourth of July, wonderful, but my question is, and I've raised this before because I suggested it, that what other special events do we pay for out of Measure AV? I would like to, and so that's, I don't know if you have that offhand, but I would, what I would suggest, and what I suggested previously, is that we create a city calendar of approved special events that will be paid for, and so that we know how much we're paying for each one, like, do, do we celebrate Juneteenth equitably? Do we celebrate other holidays that are recognized? Cesar Chavez, a state-recognized holiday, do we do that? I don't know, but these are policy decisions and funding decisions. So, we've got these two that we're gonna pay out of Measure AV, but I think we should have a calendar so everybody can see, what does Measure AV special events cover? These are the special events that it covers, and it might not just be holidays, it might be other things that we do, you know, Spring Fest and a variety of other things, but we should have a annual list, and then we can figure out what we need to appropriate for it, if there's equity in what gets funded, and, and so there's public comment on, you know, maybe we don't support spending, you know, 200,000 on one event, and maybe there are others that we don't know that we would like to support. So anyways, just, I, I mentioned it about six months ago, because we do kind of these sporadic special event funding appropriations, I think it'd be helpful, at least for me, I don't know if the other members care or are interested, just an annual list of all the special events that we provide funding for, and then we can decide whether or not we wanna support those or add others. Maybe you could just bring that back. Thanks.
All right, so, do we, do we, a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Start voting. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we're moving on to item number 713. Mr. Torres.
My mic just went up, but thank you, the reason why I pulled it, this is a big-ticket item, it's almost $4 million, and it's on our consent calendar, and it, it pertains to our resurfacing program, Public Works. This is a concern that we get on the regular from our constituents, so I thought it'd be worthwhile for you to talk about the money we're investing, what we're doing under this contract. Thanks.
Thank you, council member. Yes, this is a material street repaving project, we have five selective street segments that are in very poor condition, we wanted to tackle it now before it gets any worse. So, the funding source that we're using is gas tax, so all of it will be funded with you, using gas tax revenues. The streets we'll be paving is Avenue O from 100 to 120th East Street, R8 from 20th to 25th, another segment on R8, 20th to the Westerly Terminus, another segment on R8, on 27th to 35th, and 30th Street East from Avenue R8 to Avenue S.
My mic's not, oh, I'm gonna borrow yours. Thank you for that, I just wanted to just raise the point that we are continuing to, almost on every agenda, we have some sort of resurfacing Public Works project on our calendar, and we're moving forward. Unfortunately, Mr. Sink is not here, but he, he often comments that we're not moving forward with our resurfacing program, but we are indeed doing that, it may be on our consent calendar, that's why I pulled it, so that we can make it clear that, you know, gas tax dollars are going to fix our streets, and we're doing everything that we can to move that program forward, so thank you for that. If there are no other questions, concerns?
I just want to thank you because there's been a huge improvement in our streets over the last five to 10 years, and it's because of the hard work that you guys are doing and keeping track of which ones need repairing and at which time, and what type of repairs to be made, so, you know, it, we do hear it from the public all the time about the streets that they live in and travel on, and, and I just want the public to know that you guys are working really hard to get these things done, and, and I appreciate it, so thank you.
Thanks to the crews, Team 911. All right, so move.
Okay, we, gonna call?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Let's call. Call for the. There we go.
Motion passes.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on to item number eight, public hearing. Come on up, Sophia. 8.1. Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council. We request a public hearing, receive public comment on the draft consolidated annual performance evaluation report, also known as the CAPER, for fiscal year 2024-25, to review, approve, and authorize the city manager, Pro Tem, or the designated to make necessary changes, and submit the CAPER report to HUD by September 28, 2025, in compliance with HUD regulations. The CAPER is the report that identifies programs, projects, and services that were provided during the fiscal year to meet the goals and objectives of the consolidated plan, and this includes general CDBG and Home Administration, Fair Housing Services by the Housing Rights Center, South Arnold Valley Emergency Services, public facilities and infrastructure, such as the Q1288 project, Section 108 loan repayment, tenant-based rental assistance, and affordable housing. Staff is available for questions. Also, excuse me, also the CDBG COVID funds, we did have those in there also, and we did put this out for public notice and for public review. Staff's available for questions. Counsel, do you have any questions of Sophia before we open public comments? Oh, okay, so do I have to open public comments on this public hearing?
Yes, this is public testimony, there are no public comments on this item.
Anybody that didn't fill out a card that wants to speak? All right, we're gonna close public comments on this. So could I get a motion and a second to approve the recommendations listed by staff? We have a motion? And a second?
Second.
And a second, so let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Start voting. Motion passes.
Okay. Moving on to item number 8.2. Hi, Sophia.
Welcome back.
Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council. The item for you is a request for a public hearing to receive public comments on the permanent local housing allocation, also known as PLHA, Formula Five-Year Plan Amendment for years 2020 to 25, and to adopt Resolution Number CC 2025064, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale authorizing the application and amending the PLHA Formula Five-Year Plan with the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development for the PLHA program. The staff is requesting updates. Part of the five-year plan was money for homeless services, and the idea that we had brought forward originally was for a navigation center, which included safes and other services. We have gone on to have, looked for safes, being in a different type of facility, and having homeless services and other ways, so through, like, just the tiny homes. So we're asking to move that funding between activities that we already have that are existing. We cannot change year three for the 2021 allocation, so, but we are repurposing the 333,141 that was going for construction of the Navigation Center for Homeless Services, and we're asking for that to move to the Dream Village, the tiny home project. They have, in the last couple of years, it's taken a little bit longer to get it in place than planned, costs have increased, and so that will assist with some of those costs that we can move forward and have, so we can continue to have that completed and move forward. In addition, in the other two years, we're asking for a portion of those funds to be allocated to the duplex new construction. Again, we, our original budget was from five years ago, and the costs have gone up, so we do want to assist with that, for that duplex, and that's affordable housing for 60% and below. Part of this, this fund has to go for affordable workforce housing, and that will assist with that, but also, we're also moving funding up to, to down payments, we're moving up with down payment assistance, and to the rehabilitation and accessibility. So we are putting more into areas that you were asking for, and also, you had, in a previous meeting, we talked about additional down payment funds, with years three and four, there are additional funding that's been put in place for down payment, so we have, unable to expand that program. Staff is available for questions. Madam Clerk, do I need you to read the title of the resolution?
No, she's already read it.
I thought she had, I just wanted to make sure I didn't break any rules here. So, do we, can we do council discussion now, or should I just open it for public comments?
Public comments.
Okay, thank you, Sophia, thank you. All right, so does anybody want to provide public testimony on this item?
There are no speaker cards on this item.
No speaker cards? Last chance. All right, closing public comments. Council discussion now. Anyone? Hearing none?
Okay, so just a question, is, so, when I look through the eligibility requirements, this funding, one of the eligibility, Section 308A6, 301A6, is assisting persons who are experienced or at risk of homelessness? I think that Together California, I think it's arguable that, that those who are aging out of the foster system are at risk of homelessness, they have one of the highest homeless rates around. Is there, has there been any thought of appropriating any of these funds towards the Together California program, because there is a gap, I think it was $2 million, so that we can close the funding gap so it can be completed? Have we thought about using any of this money for that?
We did not look at that program because that's, the foster care is really not in the homeless, the Together California is not at the place of being homeless.
So there are, there are, it's 14 units, 10 units are for, for foster children, two units are for those who are aging out of the system and have nowhere to go, and one unit is for reunification, so those two units?
I'm sorry, part of that thought for the aging out is, as they're coming out, they're aging out from, turning 18 on that, in that program, it has a place for them to go, so that the, that unit is available for other, others who are, other foster, in need of foster care and need of housing.
No, I, it's, those two units are, are dedicated to those who are turning 18 and have literally nowhere to go, who are at risk of becoming homeless, and so without access to this housing location, they would otherwise be homeless. So I'm just, what I'm suggesting is maybe we can look into it some more, we don't even have a policy debate, maybe we can just look into it to see if it would be eligible, if there is any way that we can appropriate at least a portion, maybe proportional to those two units at the Together California, so I'm just trying to find funding mechanisms that we can help Together California get past the finish line. It's such a critical project, and if this is a means by which we can get at least a little bit of money there, I think we should try.
Thank you. We'll talk about it fast.
So, Ms. Reyes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, absolutely.
So, the down payment assistance, and Mr. Mendez and I went to the Greater Allo Valley Association of Realtors meeting here a few months ago, and, and we discussed with them the down payment assistance for first, is basically for first-time buyers, right?
First-time homebuyers, yes, sir.
And does this expand the program that we already had in place, or is this still the same program?
This is the same program that was adopted by council.
Right, okay, so that's just a few, that's only a few persons that will be assisted
It's adding about $500,000.
500,000, too?
Between the two years and, with the additional funding.
Okay, and then how much assistance would be provided to each first-time buyer?
I believe it's up to 125,000.
So that would only assist for?
It, but that is the maximum amount, keep in mind that we assist with only the gap that's needed, and this program does go up to 150%, and we did change the affordability from 80% to 150%, so that we, at 80%, we would be required to put more funding in, and 125,000 would not be sufficient, so we changed it to 150% to the maximum, and if somebody with less can qualify, we will, they will be included, but we'll be able to help more with less funding, they will not be needing the maximum amount.
Okay, well, if there's an industry or profession that is keenly concerned with assistance to first-time buyers, it's the real estate profession, and yet, most of them profess not really knowing anything about this program. What are we doing to get the word out? And I think we had talked to them about, through the city manager's offices, doing some outreach to make sure that the community, especially the real estate community, is aware of this.
We will be doing outreach.
You know, currently, we've already closed our first round, and we have a waiting list already.
Okay.
And, and like you said, this is an expansion of that program.
Okay.
Sophia's adding additional fundings to this program, so we currently have a waiting list, and we're hoping that this will allow us to go through those people on the waiting list, if not, open it up again so we could reach out to more people.
That's really good news.
We're, we're actually opening it up, and it's an interest list, so that we can offer it to more people at that time and not just work with the waiting list, but we, when we get through the first 25, then we will open it up and do an email blast to that interest list, so they will all have the equal chance to come in.
Okay, that's good news.
Good work.
Thank you.
And before we move forward, I just want to say that the council is very dedicated to getting the foster kids home moving forward, so anything that we can do to support that, I, I think that we would encourage you to do that, so Together California is really important, it's important to the, the kids of this community and the families, keeping kids and families together is very, very important for their mental health, physical health, their schooling, et cetera, so thank you for doing that, and, and I hope that we continue to work together on that project. We will look at other alternatives, since this at 300,000, and I know that their need is greater than that, we'll look at other alternatives. Thank you so much. You're welcome.
The appropriation is 5 million to the city, so.
Over a five-year period across all of the, and we cannot change, amend the first three years.
Got it.
All right, so could I get a motion and?
We'll do approve this item.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second?
Why not?
Could we call for that?
Start voting.
Motion passes, thank you so much. Moving on to number nine, appointments, so 9.1. City Attorney.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, and City Council members. This item before you was brought back at your request from the last meeting to appoint two council members to an ad hoc committee to talk about the Little Rock Dam project, and then possibly review and provide, provide direction as to any partnership with the Palmdale Water District, and then also to work with staff and kind of figure out what this, the city's interest in this project, and provide a recommendation back, so just two of you, and it's an ad hoc committee, so there's no Brown Act requirements, and you guys can meet freely with staff and possibly the Palmdale Water District, they're a subcommittee.
All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and call for public comments on these appointments. Anybody want to make public comments on the appointments for this board or ad hoc committee?
Good evening, I'm Betsy. A year ago, I attended the Palmdale Water Academy, and it was just before the Little Rock Dam birthday party, and as a WAA, I represent, they said I represented the public because it was limited, and I know, that was the first time when I took the WAA that I had been up to the Little Rock Dam.
Okay.
When we did our class tour, and then when I came for the 100th birthday party, that was, I went with another friend who had taken it, it was, it was an historical event, and we both had a great time, and I know Mr. Lowe was there, and it's a beautiful area, and I know there were people that, from our side of the mountains, that because of prior redistricting, they no longer were part of the, the several districts, and, but they asked special permission to come speak, I'm glad they did, because they know this side of the valley, but it was sad that the people that are now the various districts that live on the other side of the mountains didn't come, but it was a wonderful event, and I think both Mr. Lowe and Ms. Benton Court would be ideal, the two council members for this project, because you came.
I was there too.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't remember you being there, but I know he spoke.
I had a hat on, that's why you didn't recognize me.
Oh, okay, probably, yeah.
It was a sunny day.
Yeah, it was, but it was a beautiful event, so I hope you two are the ones that chosen for this, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, and one thing, when you were mentioning the calendar of events for September and October, it was neglected to mention Constitution Day on September 17th, and Constitution Week on September 17th through 23rd. People come up here and talk about, I know my rights, but there's been so much forgotten about the Constitution, we say the pledge, the flag, but many of us truly do not really understand the Constitution and misquote it, so I hope that is recorded and something is done to recognize a wonderful Constitution.
Didn't realize that we had missed that, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other public comments on this item? All right, we're closing public comments.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Are we to the point where we're gonna nominate council members?
Let's go ahead, let me just say that because I sit on the Palmdale Recycled Water Board, I think it would be a conflict of interest if I served on that board, and I think same with Austin, so I think that we need to find two of the remaining.
Darn, I was just, we were, I was so excited to nominate you.
Sorry, I would love to, but I think because I sit on the board, it would be a conflict.
I'd like to make a, a comment, and then hopefully.
I'd like to make a comment and then hopefully a motion. We each started having conversations about working together with the county, with Lancaster, with forestry and the city of Palmdale and the Palmdale Water District. After all, Palmdale Water District owns, manages the Little Rock Dam. And that was a facility that was enjoyed for decades by the community. It's a beautiful area. It still is, as has just been pointed out. But it, but you know, the different amenities have fallen into disrepair. And those things need to be, those things need to be fixed. And it's going to take some investment, which I think is a valuable investment on the part of all of the entities involved. And it's going to be a great benefit to the, to the community, particularly around Little Rock, Lake Los Angeles and the entire Antelope Valley, but particular those areas will begin to enjoy that again.
I was going to say, in the last 18 months, I've had meetings with Congresswoman Judy Chu. I've met with Congressman George Whitesides. I've met several times with the Federal Fish and Wildlife. I understand how this started and how we got to this point because I've been in the room pushing those efforts. And I know Kathy McLaren on the Palmdale Water District has been leading the charge for them. So I think I would be best to go on the committee to continue those conversations that I started.
Councilmember Olson, if you only allowed me the opportunity to speak in favor of you. I would absolutely support nominating you. I would like to make that a motion to nominate you to serve as one of the council members on the ad hoc subcommittee. If so, because of all the work that you've done, I know you're very passionate about this issue. I think you've done a lot. You've moved this, the matter forward on all levels, federal, state, and local in terms of making it known, putting it on the table for people so that they're aware of it, but also generating funding, resources. So I think you'd be the perfect appointment to that, to that subcommittee. Would be happy to work with you on it, but you know, it's up to you guys.
Thank you. I would like to make the second nomination, Councilmember Loa. Because I do agree with this. I do agree in a regional approach. I think that LA County Parks have expressed interest. I'm open to hearing from them. The city of Lancaster expressed interest. I'd like to get some money back from them. So if you can help in those conversations, then let's move conversations forward.
So is that a motion, sir?
Yeah, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Can we call for the vote?
So, do you guys want to separate the motions?
Yes, please.
You want to have two separate motions? Okay, so the first one is to nominate and appoint Councilmember Olson. That was, the first was by Alacan, Councilmember Alacan. And the second was?
I'll second it.
Okay. That's the first one. Start voting.
Can I vote for myself?
Motion passes. We will go to the next motion. And that is? Councilmember?
So I think you made the motion for Loa?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I think it was mine. Did you want to second it?
Okay, I'll second that. Let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Start voting. Motion passes.
Where did Austin come from?
How do we?
And that was a no. Here, we want to, I can, I can re-put that vote in again.
There's not five of us up here.
Let's go ahead and put that vote in again.
What happened?
She came up with five and there's only four of us here.
Oh.
Right.
Talk about malfunction.
There's one. I got to put in absent.
Okay. Do we need to revote or?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and revote it. Start voting. Motion passes.
There, okay.
Thank you.
I guess we're moving on to item number 10, the city managers' report.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, we have quite a few items this month. Starting off with the Palmdale Playhouse. Join us this weekend for the prom, a musical comedy presented by the Palmdale Repertory Theater. Tickets are on sale now at palmdaleplayhouse.com. Also Tuesday, September 9th at Dominic Masari Park. Come out and meet your District Four council member or Eric Olson. Public safety staff, local law enforcement, and community partners dedicating to keeping your neighborhood safe. That will be again this Tuesday, next Tuesday, September 9th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Dominic Masari Park. On Thursday, September 18th at the Palmdale Playhouse. Join Mayor Pro Tem Laura Benton Court for a tongue howl to learn about upcoming projects, ask questions, and connect with neighbors and your elected official. Don't miss your chance to stay informed about decisions shaping Palmdale's future.
Please come. The 18th?
Saturday, September 12th. Join us for a free fun painting session with acrylic paints, brushes, and canvases. Space is limited and we'll have this fun event at Dominic Masari Park Fieldhouse and Marie Kerr Community Building. This is Saturday, September 20th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Also on Saturday, September 20th, we'll be having our Foodie Fest. Join us for food and a food festival and drinks on Saturday, September 20th from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. Tickets are on sale at foodfest, foodiefest, excuse me, foodiefest.com. Also, Monday, September 22nd. We invite you to attend our disaster preparedness expo, which will feature emergency preparedness demonstrations, information, resources, and more. This will be held at Legacy Commons from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. On Tuesday, September 30th, join us at the Palmdale City Library for Books and Barks. An opportunity for young readers to improve their reading skills with therapy dogs from the High Desert Obedience Club. This is held at the Palmdale City Library from 3:30 to 5:00 p.m. And finally, on Monday, October 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Join us at Marie Kerr Recreation Center and meet your District Two council member, Richard Loa, for also your public safety team and law enforcement for your neighborhood safe event. Again, that's Monday, October 6th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Marie Kerr Recreation Center. And that's it.
Okay, good. Now, we're going to move to item number 11, which is non-agenda public comments.
We have Michelle Lee.
Hi. I just want to say that I was really appalled what I heard and saw last week. The attacks on your constituents, Eric was just uncalled for. And it was like you were racist towards your constituents, not the groups that come up here and our citizens, we're regular citizens, just wanting to talk to you and tell you how we feel and maybe hopefully be part of the improvement process. You know, we're from every culture, every background, religious beliefs, all that. So it's not just one group that comes up here. There's many, many groups that come up here. And it just was uncalled for. I just couldn't even believe my ears. You were talking about an indication of what you thought somebody was thinking. Well, you can't know what they're thinking. You can't know what they, you know, you're talking about rolling of eyes. Well, did you go up to that person, ask them why they rolled their eyes? I guarantee you didn't. But I did. I wanted to know why they rolled their eyes. And it wasn't for the groups that came up. It was for, because constantly we keep being barraged by them taking our tax dollars for possible illegal immigration projects where we, the people in the city of Palmdale, we have, we have the homeless. You know, we've got the, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought because I just, there's so many other groups. There's not just one group we need to give with. We've got the highest tax in the country, 11.25%. You know, so just be a little bit more respectful because it wasn't really nice. I say if you can't handle the comments or eye rolls, then you might not be fit for the job. So just, I'm just saying, you're here for all of us. You're not here for one group. Okay, so the attacks don't need to be there. And the last is voting for a mayor. We, the people, should be voting for a mayor. I don't know how it ended up that you picked somebody a couple of years ago with a ping pong ball and then now you all vote for each other. That's not how it goes. It has to be we, the people, vote. And we want to bring that back. And I do have a letter from?
Your time is up, ma'am. I apologize.
Oh, it is. Okay, well, I want to give you this letter because it is from 70 years ago from the mayor that was the mayor 70 years ago.
That'd be Jim Bowley, right?
No, Mr. Call. K-A-A.
Our city's only 63 years old.
Uh, no, his dad. Yeah, his dad was the honorary mayor. So I just wanted you to know. They would like to, and they've been just doing business.
Betsy Haslett?
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle Lee. August 20, 19th, item five before public comments. Laura Benton Court mentioned the fiasco that happened at Lancaster the prior week. Her words are about the ideas and thoughts, city of Palmdale welcomes everyone. Great idea, if you have a great idea or something that is bothering you that you want to bring to our attention, you are, her emphasis, always welcome in these council chambers. I want to be very clear about that. After the meeting ended and I departed, a video continued which I saw. Mr. Olson ranted and made a tirade against me and PFC. You, Mr. Olson, misunderstood everything I said and my actions. Several times in meetings, you ask for clarity. My content is in regards to the pontificating, mainly from one who mentioned those who pontificate, and the frequent redundancy about fear, fear mongering about ICE, about lawsuits. The ICE commentary flip-flopped back and forth between all and only three, all and only three. Recent years, we have witnessed the disrespect for law enforcement, just declining the accusations of racism. To quote, "For rulers are not a cause of fear, for good behavior, but for evil." Do you want to have no fear of authority? Do what is good and you will hear, have praise from the same. In other words, comply. How is it racist, Mr. Olson, that I commended Hispanic Los Angeles County Sheriff Department and youth for going into the explorers program? And the redundancy of people saying, "I know my rights," a phrase which has become very self-centered, very self-serving. It used to be taught that responsibility goes with rights. Again, how is it racist, Mr. Olson, that I brought up human trafficking, including children, even here in the Antelope Valley? That it's heartbreaking to those who know their rights. Why are they not speaking out for these people in our own community? From an ancient text, "Open your mouth for the mute, for the rights of all the unfortunate. Open your mouth, judge righteously, and defend the rights of the afflicted and needy." Yet I do not hear these people that know their rights doing any of that. By your video, Mr. Olson, the character assassination of me clearly disagrees with how Ms. Benton Court opened. You owe Ms. Benton Court an apology for, the one who is very clear about always welcoming the public into these council chambers. And as Michelle Lee mentioned, such people are unfit for your position.
Michelle, Michelle, PFC.
Hello. I definitely did need to say this because of something Mr. Olson felt the need to say at the last city council meeting. I'm absolutely disgusted by the emotional outburst that you displayed for all to see. Accusing us, us at Palmdale Freedom Coalition of being racist just because we don't want our country flooded with illegal immigrants. We work hard for our money and our government takes plenty of it, including the free healthcare that some of these immigrants get. It's outrageous. We're, we're done with the skyrocketing. We've got, we've got taxes on our gas and the highest tax in the freaking country right here. And you know, we, it's just not fair. It's not fair. And whoever you thought might have rolled their eyes over this, I'm sure it was because somebody said something ridiculous. It had nothing to do with racism. So whatever you, whatever you think is happening here is clearly not. But you know, we, we just feel like we, we have to fight for the return of a civilized society and that does not include the outrageous, uncontrolled, illegal immigrant population. I'm sorry, it just doesn't. I'm sorry if you think that that's racist, but that's your problem if you do, sir. Sorry. So using defamatory language directed towards a member of, members of the community you serve is dangerous. I don't understand how you came to that conclusion, but we do not, we did not refuse to respect your rules and order. That's not what happened. We were being told to wear medical devices with zero evidence of any effect, that they were effective. And ordinance 1577 had nothing to do with masks. That was all about the shots and the vaccine cards, all that crap. That is not what we were here about. That's, ordinance 1577 never even mentions a mask. So maybe you want to read it. You might want to read it and you might want to consider the code of conduct that we are held to because you did not clearly display that. It was embarrassing. It was immature. And I don't know, I don't know why you have to throw the fact that we are completely under our rights to support any president in office at that very moment. If you, we support President Trump, so we're racist, we're terrible people. No, more than half the country supports President Trump. So, sir, maybe you should consider the code of conduct. Maybe you should consider not speaking if you have something terrible to say to your constituents. Because I just, I just think it's ridiculous. So I believe that a public apology is necessary and I also believe that after that, maybe you should resign.
We have, we have Mark, Maradona.
Good evening, council. Mayor Benton Court. In the August 19th city council meeting, Mr. Olson attacked the Palmdale Freedom Coalition and in no uncertain terms called Palmdale Freedom Coalition racist. He, he conducted his attack after the Palmdale Freedom Coalition had left the room. That says it all about his character. Mr. Olson pretends to be the protector of the people of color. He and Mr. Corillo have made the case that they are the voice of the voiceless, defenders of the people of color. But your actions prove different. I'm a person of color. The past president of the Antelope Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and a member of the Palmdale Freedom Coalition, I believe in their mission so strongly that I am now the leader of the Lancaster Freedom Coalition. Yes, I have run for the position, the position of mayor in Lancaster and continue to fight for the people of Lancaster, all of the people, all of them. Regardless of color, I would think that you would support my effort if you truly believe in race representation as you have stated in the past. I do not understand if you are in support of the uplifting people of color, why you are a city council member. Why would you not recruit and support a person of color and work hard to have them elected instead of you, Mr. Olson? A person of non-color. We know you are supported by a number of people from the Hispanic community. Why not lift one of them up to represent your district instead of you? Are you more capable of representing people of color than members of that? Are you more capable of representing people of color than members of that community? I'm here tonight to ask for you, for Mr. Olson, to resign and give up his seat to someone of color. If race is so important to him that he would attack Palmdale Freedom Coalition, a multi-ethnic group, including people of color, then I am here to challenge him to not just spout off about race, but to take action and resign his seat in order to someone of color to take his place. Unless, of course, he believes, you serve believe, only a person of non-color can. Thank you.
Yu Guevargas?
I don't have anything written, I always speak from the heart. I don't hold back either. Before I get to my agenda, I just want to say it's a great idea to bring the Little Rock Dam back recreational. I used to swim in there some 50 years ago, 55 years ago, all the way in 70s and 80s. And when they came and cleaned up behind the dam, we found trucks, bicycles, cars. We didn't find any bodies, but a lot of picks. I have three picks from there, I was helping those guys. It's an amazing place, but let me warn you, if you want to open that place, the demographics have changed. We used to be God-fearing, Christian, wholesome people, but now look what we got here, from LA Basin, from all over. You're gonna need security, a uniformed police officer present from dawn to dusk. If you remember, there was a restaurant and bar in there. You're not gonna have another bar there and serving alcohol there. But it may be a small store, but you're gonna need a lot of security. If you've seen that bathroom, which I saw last month, have you seen that toilet? Tons and tons of graffiti, it's really embarrassing. First of all, it'll take you $3 to $5 million to just facelift a little bit. It's a magnificent place, and I congratulate you, and I hope you will do it, but you're gonna need security, I'm warning you for the record, you're gonna need extreme security. Now, back to where I was here, some, five weeks ago, Mr. Olson and I met in front of the city hall here, and Gallego was with me, and we had a civilized conversation, and I thought he's a reasonable man, but he proved me wrong. You're a coward. After we left the two weeks ago council, you called all PFC members racist? For your information, I'm an Assyrian of Middle Eastern descent. I love everybody. I opened the first club here, Black Hope, from 1991 to 2005. Ninety percent of my clientele were black people. Blues, funk, Motown jazz, and we're still friends, we still love one another. And we had a Latin jazz night on Wednesday night, 818 used to play there. We didn't see race. I was hoping that we all bury this garbage about, oh, you're white, I'm a black, we're all Americans. I don't give a damn if you're Democrat, and I don't give a damn if you're Republican. We're all Americans, bury that crap once and for all. And you waited again till I left last meeting two weeks ago, and then you called us racist. We have blacks, we have Latinos, we have Arabs like me, I'm a camel jockey, I'm mighty proud of it. Don't ever call me a racist again, and you better resign.
Abraian McPherson?
Fun crowd going on tonight. I left this with yours, City Clerk, I'm sorry. So, I'd asked them to give you guys copies, so you guys can review it later, because there's a lot of information that I'm going to go over tonight, and I'm going to try to make sure I meet that time mark, okay? So, the first thing that I'm going to address with you guys is, you're going to see on here that the title of this is the Recall REX. This is actually a list of everything that they violated when they were going through their recall. And the reason that I'm here tonight is because I'm calling upon both cities in an effort to have you realign your city ordinances and also your city policies, to define them and clarify them, because you need to ensure that you have your own established recall policies. I've already been on the phone with the California Secretary of State, I've been on the phone with the Los Angeles County Recorder's Office, all regarding voters' districting, all regarding how recalls are supposed to happen, just to kind of highlight some of the things they violated. Ten people on the May 2 filing were listed as being legally responsible, though that May filing second did not go through. It did not go through because myself and several other people who ended up on that list without our consent made several complaints to the city of Lancaster, stating that we did not consent for our names to be used in that capacity, which resulted in us withdrawing our names from that. In addition to that, not only did that take place, but on the first filing, the March 17th. We assume that it was just basically a conflict of understanding the election codes, that maybe the people that were kind of organizing it together didn't clearly understand that you cannot put false statements into a notice of intent, which two false statements were false, which they were submitted back and forth, you know, to try to make the corrections, myself helping them. What I did not consent to, though, is on that second filing, where my name was used without my permission in that type of manner, outside of what I did agree to, which was to be one of the 60 proponents. This is why it's important for you to clarify what those policies are. The second thing that I'm going to address with you is, I find it interesting that so many PFC members tonight are talking about wanting to have a civilized conversation, or wanting to talk about their constitutional rights, but yet they have members on their own committees who violate my rights, who have slandered me, made libel statements, who have stalked me, who accosted me at the last city council meeting. I had to ask a sheriff to walk me out of the door because they blocked the doorway, refusing to let me leave. So, I'm asking you guys to, and that individual is here tonight, so I am going to just put it on speaker that I do need somebody to escort me to my car. But keeping that in mind, I am asking that you guys, as a city council, really take into consideration that these bad actors are capable of being held legally accountable by requiring them to organize as an official organization, just like we do with a business. Business has to get a business license, they need to have insurance, they need to make sure that if they violate anyone's information or violate their rights, that they can be held accountable. I want to be able to hold these people accountable who are harassing me, slandering me, threatening me, who are, after being told not to communicate with me, are continuing to make those efforts to harass me. I'm in the process right now of having attorneys filing a restraining order because of it. I can't hold this person or these people accountable, but yet that same person, when I want to hold the group accountable, was also recognized by them, by given a medal and also a certificate for their, for their good work.
That's time.
And I apologize, but the last thing I'm going to just kind of recap on this, and I hope that you guys read through it, is the dignity and death that I did list. My neighbor was brutally murdered, and her body was left outside for 15 hours uncovered. As her daughter cried across the street, I just want to reiterate once more just how important it is to make sure that those bodies are covered. So, I'll leave that with you guys, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And we do have two deputies in the room if you need them.
Adriana Gallo?
Okay, good evening, my name's Adriana Gallo, I'm a public notary, and I'm studying for immigration specialist. So, yes, I'm a member of Palmdale Freedom Coalition, and we were doing a Recall REX. To my knowledge, this lady is just going crazy, because she was rejected from the recall. And she has no proof or anything else that I was threatening her, there's two doors at the city council, so there's nothing that was holding her back. And I'm just so angry, and I'm speechless right now. I'm just going to sit down.
Thank you. We have Jovol Calas?
Jovol?
Jovol Calas?
Good evening, Palmdale City Council. My name is Jovell Caius, and for the past nine years, I have been a Boy Scout here in Palmdale, California. I'm part of Troop 146, and we meet at the Palmdale United Methodist Church. Now, I really love my city, you know, so much so that when I was in charge of my troop, I always made sure we did projects to benefit it, such as volunteering at the Taco Festival, and a bunch of other festivals, and also just organizing community drives and stuff like that. Well, now, it is time for my Eagle project. And, well, to give back to the city I love so much, I would like to build a welcome sign for the city of Palmdale that will sit off the exit of the 14th freeway on West Palmdale Boulevard and First Street West. And, yes, I would like to know where I can go to get the guidance and how I can go about beginning this Eagle project.
What a wonderful idea, the man sitting right there with the glasses is the one you want to talk to.
Alrighty then.
And we think it's a wonderful idea.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Quick interjection, thank you for your service, congratulations on nine years, you're continuing to give back to the community, and I have no doubt that you will continue to do that over the course of your entire life.
Well, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Adele?
Hi, good evening, my name is Adele Mikail, I'm a builder, I build a lot of stuff here, a lot of construction. And me and my partners, we own the property at 38733 Ninth Street East.
I'm sorry, sir, we can't hear you, can you start over, maybe restart his time, so we could hear him?
Okay.
Can you move it a little bit closer? And then state the address, too, so we know what you're talking about.
My name is Adele Mikail, I'm a builder here, and I build the office building on 38733 Ninth Street East in Palmdale. Me and my partners, we own this property, and we just received a letter from the city that across streets, they're gonna build affordable housing for less than acre, for 48 units, affordable housing, and community commercial. And they allow one parking per unit, which is three bedrooms, a lot of three bedrooms, and a lot of two bedrooms, 48 units. And they allow one parking per unit, which is gonna be a lot of, and the city allow just one parking. I have 72 parking in my office, in my office building, which is about one acre, and there's less than acre. And definitely, these people, they're gonna come, and across streets, they're gonna park in my property, and I have a hard time to kick them out or call for the, remove the cars, and gonna be a very hassle for me. So, I am funding this project, and the project on APN number 300804012, across street from my office building, and gonna be like five-story building, and 48 units, three bedrooms and two bedrooms. This is gonna affect my project, my property, a lot, because I have to hustle with these people to let them park in my property. I talked with the planning department, they said you can put a sign there, you know, nobody can park there, but definitely it's not gonna be, to remove these cars, I have to put a sign on each car for 48 hours, if they don't move it, I have to call the people to tow it away. So, gonna be very hassle for me to just try to move these cars from my property. So, I asked, you know, for this project to be considered for this point, and they said there are no people on the, no people gonna park in the street, you know, still gonna be more problem for all the construction in our street. So, I need the council to consider that, to defeat this project coming. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, this is exactly why public notification of adjacent properties for development is so important, so that we can get this kind of feedback. I believe, and without mapquesting it, that this property is in my district. Can, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna work with our city manager to ask if we can get your contact information, and we can work together to see if there's a way to address and resolve your concerns. Thank you.
I have the information.
Okay, good, thanks.
I'll provide it to you. Alejandra Castaneda?
Good evening. I wasn't able to attend last week, but I watched the meeting afterwards. And I have to say, Mr. Olson, that I agree with you on one thing, is that you shouldn't have voiced what you did. Well, two things, correction. The other thing that I agree with you on is, I'm disgusted, too. But I am disgusted that you, as a city council member, use your dience to make false accusations against PFC. I have three points that I want to make, Mr. Olson. You accuse PFC of being racist, you mentioned that you see people rolling their eyes toward certain speakers. I looked up the definition of racism, rolling your eyes is not in the definition. So, could you please provide us your reference to be able to make such an accusation towards PFC? And this PFC, brown-skinned, Spanish-speaking, naturalized Mexican, is now racist? You, Mr. Olson, stated, "We fought for ordinance 1577 to oppose masks." If you, as a council member, if you would have learned the ordinance, if you would have learned the ordinance is against mandating vaccines and passports to Palmdale residents, not opposing masks. And lastly, if you call PFC hypocrites, you say, "PFC claims to follow laws, yet we come to meetings and not follow the laws." You never stated what laws PFC violated. So, please enlighten us with facts. We are not here for your opinionated rants. PFC deserves a public apology, and the city deserves your resignation. Thank you.
Marcia, Marcia, regarding public access?
Hello, good evening. Yes, it is my patriotic duty to stand here and talk about my rights. I mean, we all know that the Constitution has something to say about our rights, and so every time we see someone trying to violate our rights, Mr. Olson, the thing about our rights is that we should be able to say, "We disagree with you," right? And I disagree with the way that you behaved, uncivilized, really, but when it comes right down to it, the idea is that I have an opportunity to address you in a regrievance, a re-grievance. About a month ago, I stood up here and simply said, "I oppose, I oppose a bill on taxation." I didn't agree with it, I don't know if anyone else in the group agreed or disagreed, but I had just paid for a gasoline-driven vehicle, it was a fee that was involved in that decision that I didn't understand, I didn't understand why I was going to have to pay a fee every year, and it had to do with the Green Initiative. And so, I was sitting there, listening to you all voting on this Green Initiative, and I thought, "No, it doesn't sound right to me, I'm gonna get up there and say something." So, I came up here and I opposed that, and when I returned to my seat, you, Mr. Olson, and are you kidding me? I mean, seriously, you looked at me and said, you said that you thought that I was being, let's see, what is the word exactly? It was kind of like, was tyrannical, or I was not tyrannical, let me see, what was it? It was, no, he's more like the fascist. But you were suggesting to me the same thing that, you know, they said here in the room before we got started, is that we are not supposed to use derogative language, okay? We're not supposed to be derogative in our approach, we're not supposed to say things that are derogative, and that's exactly what you did with Palmdale Freedom Coalition. And so, the point is, you're trying to shut me down for my First Amendment right, you're trying to make us all browbeat us, basically. Have you ever thought of yourself as a browbeater? That's how I see it, and it is my right. So, I think you should resign as well. And that's not as a person from Palmdale Freedom Coalition, it's as a citizen who has a right to say that I stand with our president. I stand with Donald J. Trump, our president, and you should, too.
Roger Soderst?
For those who haven't already joined my fan club, I'm Roger Soderst.
Hi, Roger.
Now, I generally prefer to speak extempore, but today I made a few notes, so I wouldn't forget anything, which often happens. I had also intended to ask Mr. Olson to maintain decorum in these chambers, however, given the public interest that his comments caused... However, given the public interest that his comments caused, please, I encourage all of you to rant away. It brings people in. When I started taking an interest in civic affairs, I didn't know what to expect. There was controversy over masks and vaccines. That certainly didn't help the residents. Fortunately, with considerable public pressure, that issue was resolved in a positive manner. Then the city was helping the auto mall with funds for marketing. Again, not helping the residents. I might point out that not all the council members here agreed with that. The state and county place a higher priority on helping illegal alien criminals than the residents, even though this may increase crime. The city seemed to be eager to jump on board with this. Wow. The enthusiastic support in this chamber for unions. I'm thinking this will keep non-union contractors and workers from working on city projects and means the city will pay more for the work. Unions have historically been associated with communism and socialism. Workers of the world unite. I'm starting to wonder if anything done here has a positive effect for the residents. These are only a few examples. I could go on and on, well, at least for three minutes. Anyone who has more to add to the list, feel free to hand a piece of paper to the city clerk and jump up here and speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Berta Delaglia?
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Berta Delaglia. And last week, you know, I shared with you, I was born in Mexico. I came when I was eight. And, you know, every time I hear the National Anthem, I feel pride and I love the U.S.
Yes.
I appreciate the opportunities that I've had that my parents didn't have. And I remember 9/11, it broke my heart. My mom was flying back from Mexico that morning and it was just a blow, a low blow in my gut. I still can't watch those videos of those plane crashing. And to me, I feel like that's the day, you know, us as Americans, lots are innocents or that believe we're untouchable. Okay? I worked in downtown L.A. at the courthouse during the riots. And I remember having to go to my in-laws' house to take a shower, change, and go back. And as I went back and I turned left on Temple, I saw the tanks. And I had to pull to the side and show my letter from a judge to say it was okay for me in the streets. And I thought, "This is not the U.S." And I think those were the worst moments for me in America, because when we live here, we don't know what's, why other people come here. You know, we think we know, but we don't have that experience. And I think the current political environment hurts me. I have friends on both sides and in the middle. And I think what I've learned in school, you know, through my communities that I lived in, is the decency, you know, decorum. We may not agree on everything. We can't agree on everything. But to me, tolerance, diversity of thought are huge things. Tolerance doesn't mean, "I agree with you 100%." It just means, "I respect your opinion, but I'm entitled to mine," right? And, you know, we'll pay taxes here. We'll go to register, they'll ask us, "Are you lawfully in the U.S. or not?" We pay taxes. And, you know, I'm okay with criminals being taken away, but again, that decency should apply to everyone, as Mr. Loa said last week, everyone in the U.S., legal or illegal, has the right to a due process. And, you know, I think, yes, America should be first, but with dignity and respect.
Felix Menendez?
You can do it.
Do we have a translator? All right, while we're waiting for a translator to come forward, again, I'm gonna ask for, we've asked, I've been asking for this for almost two and a half years. We need to have consistent translation available at all of our meetings. Fifty-three point, 53% of our population speaks English as a second language so that we can all have the opportunity to participate and to exercise our free speech rights. We need to be able to have translation.
Buenas tardes.
Good evening.
Primero, quería hacerles una petición de reparación de algunas calles.
First, I would like to request repairs of certain streets?
En la 25 y la Pan del Boulevard.
On 25th and Palmdale Boulevard.
Sierra Highway y S.
Sierra Highway and S.
Entonces, son espacios que está bastante deteriorado.
There's areas where we're requesting repairs.
Y también agradecerles a todos ustedes.
And to also thank you.
Por el soporte a la resolución en la Junta Interior.
For the support of resolution that was discussed in the previous meeting.
Para proteger a la comunidad inmigrante latina.
To protect the immigration community.
En California, en el año 24.
In California in 2024.
La comunidad inmigrante pagó en taxes 8,500 millones de dólares.
The immigrant community paid in taxes 8,000...
8,500 millones de dólares.
Eight million, five hundred. And a half million.
Taxes que la comunidad inmigrante, por no tener un seguro social, no agarra ningún beneficio.
Taxes that the immigrant community does not benefit from because they are unable to.
Sin embargo, hoy en día, la comunidad inmigrante, como todos ustedes saben, vive bajo de un ataque racista, discriminatorio.
However, today, as you have witnessed, the immigrant community is under attack.
Y solo quería agradecerles el trabajo que ustedes están haciendo, sé que no es fácil estar ahí.
And I just want to thank you for the work that you are doing. I understand and know that it's not easy to be sitting there.
Pero gracias por representar a la comunidad latina en Pan del, que es un 57% latino.
But thank you for representing the Hispanic community in Palmdale, which is the 57% of the community.
Y estamos para seguir trabajando con ustedes en lo que podamos.
And we are here to continue collaborating with you on what is possible.
Gracias.
Thank you. We have Napoleon Dimson?
Good evening, council members. Mayor Proten. I always have a wardrobe malfunction. My pants, my pants is a little tight, that's all I'm saying. My pants is tight. Yeah, yeah. So basically, I just had to kind of offense to a few of the things that I was hearing. And if I was an owl, I'd be able to really turn around and look, look back there to address a few of the comments that I heard. But I was at the last council meeting here and I wanted to say to Mr. Olson that I appreciate the work that you're doing for the community. You represent us as a community and it is very diverse, the different races that are here. And that, that day that you spoke up, I was sitting there kind of observing and seeing the same thing. So when you spoke up, I felt like you were speaking for me. So a lot of people are asking you to resign or to stop doing what you're doing, but that will only eliminate someone who's speaking for people like myself. So I highly encourage you to stay, please, and keep doing what you're doing. And as well for Andrea, the way you guys speak up for our people, the minority community, we appreciate that. It seems like they would like to get, you know, a Latino or someone who's speaking for the black community out of the, out of, you know, the council seat, so that way we don't have any say-so, but the fact that you guys are speaking for us means a lot. They saying like there was no racist comments that were made or how, they're like attacking you for, they're very, they're taking highly offense to you speaking up for us when I heard the lady in the red say, "Oh, I passed by on Sierra Highway and a black lady just flashed me," you know, speaking about human trafficking. So when I pass by there, there's not only just black women that are being human trafficked. I've seen white people, I've seen Latinas, and I've seen black women as well. So there's things that are being said that we could take offense to. So we appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you for speaking up. Anybody trying to tell you to resign or, they're just, a lot of these people are, "Where is that hate coming from?" Or, "Where is the anger right now when they're speaking to you coming from?" It may be guilt for how they're feeling. So from Salva, from the black community, because I was like one of the only black people in here, and when I heard that, I was kind of like, "Ugh." That kind of hurt my feelings, because that could be one of my family members out there. What, you know, it's small out here. Population's only like 107,000 people. So thank you for speaking up for us. I hope that you'll be there for another decade, if that's, if you're gonna be here speaking up for our people, you as well, Andrea, but every single council member, we appreciate the work you do. And yeah, I'm gonna go get some better pants.
Thank you. No more speaker cards.
All right. How do we top that, right? Palmdale, place we call home. I like to start like that, because that brings us home, right? After listening to these last 30 minutes of rhetoric, if you will, right? I'm choosing not to engage myself and get baited into that type of conversation. What I do want to say is, 1.2 million undocumented people since January to July this year have left the labor force. And you can figure that out of who that was. And if you want to talk about immigration, they moved the United States intentionally, hired by companies knowingly that they're undocumented. That is the America that I grew up with and many of us here who speak against them grew up with. So the origin of removing criminals from America is not what's happening now. We see it all over the news. As Mr. Olson clearly stated, fear mongling. They're also attacking people who are United States citizens, who are legal permanent residents, regardless if they're from Mexico or not. It's based on the color of our skin, oppressing our voices. Dare I say, ethnic cleansing, right? That is the history of our America. And yes, like Berta said, I love my America. I am naturalized. I did come from Mexico and I did it the right way. These 1.2 million, guess what? More than 90% of them did it the right way. And the criminality behind it, very, very minimal. So this route of exporting and, and ridding people that are undocumented because they say they're criminals, couldn't be further than the truth. What is happening is they're taking anyone and then dealing with it later, as witnessed on the news time and time again. So living here, and excuse me, I'm not interrupting you and I didn't interrupt you when you were here talking. Give me that respect. Having said that, moving forward, this is the body that's gonna bring us to harmonious conditions living in this city. This is the body that time and time again listens to everyone here. So I, I support what you're trying to do here and I hope moving forward in the next meeting, we have positive impact that affects all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is John. John?
Thank you. I also heard Mr. Olson's comments and I'm reminded by Morgan Freeman. In an interview they had with Morgan, he says, "What do you think of racism? How are you gonna stop racism?" He simply said, "Quit talking about it. Quit talking about it." So every time they said, he said, "How do you tell a racist?" He says, "The guy who calls the person a racist is probably the racist. So quit talking about it." You know, we, we have, there isn't anything that anybody in here can't do that we can't do. I'm probably less than any of them, but, but I know that these folks from the PFC, you know, they, they carry the Constitution in there. That's what they teach. You know, they had a little paper. I funded it. You know, I pay probably more in taxes than all of you put together. But I'm not gonna rip anybody apart, but you know, quit talking about racism. And as far as the people coming here, you want to talk about putting, having these ICE officials, they're law enforcement people. They live in a community. Yeah, our local sheriffs know who they are. I know some of them. They have their wives, their children, they go to school here, they, they coach basketball, Little League baseball, they're members of the PTA. And you want to expose them because 1,100% increase in crime against those ICE officials. They're law officials. They go through heavy, heavy training. They're here to get out the illegals. They're here to get out the crime, to make the community safer. And according to what you said, Mr. Olson, you want to support the criminal. Forget that. You know, let ICE do their job. Let them do their job. They're members of the community. Why do you want to do that? I mean, they gotta be protected. And as we do with our law enforcement officials here, as a member, I've been a member of all of those, all those community activities. I've raised a lot of money for the community in 50 years I've been here, known all of you. And I ran campaigns and I'm probably the only one in the Antelope Valley that got to sit in a rotunda, probably only two, one of two in California during this last inauguration. So I speak with my pocket and I speak with the Constitution as well. So I'm not here to beat anybody up, but thank you, but shame on you.
David Jester? David Jester?
My anger is up and beyond. This should have never happened. I don't just ask for your resignation, I demand it. Racism is not distilled in white. Do you know how many times I've been called racist because I am white and no other reason? And it happens over and over again. I have to tell my son and my daughter, there is nothing wrong with being white. I tell my nephews, there's nothing wrong with being white and Hispanic. It is sad that we have a country in which we have people who are not supposed to be And you have to remind people what illegal means. And when people talk about, "Well, who in the world are you gonna get to do your, pick your potatoes and tomatoes and stuff?" Do you know who used to do it? My family. As a child, I chopped cotton. I worked in those fields. Do you know why I don't now? Because I'm educated and good enough and have enough experience now that I can work a job that pays almost 50-some-odd dollars an hour. Why the heck would I go and work in the field? There are people who are here, and many of them white, who should be working in our fields. We don't need people from other countries to do it. My brother-in-law is the only one in his family that was born here. My son, or my daughter's husband, is from La Paz. Any of you have any idea where that front, that is?
Bolivia.
And did you know that I'm the one who sponsored him? I don't have a problem with people of other color. I have a problem with people who feel like they deserve something that takes away from the people of the United States. Those who are indigenous. born here, if you wanna say originals, then whatever. To me, that is not racist. The Bakersfield Californian had a article in which they interviewed an illegal couple in Taft. The woman said, we pay our fair share in taxes. They took her taxes and found that they had paid the previous year seventeen thousand dollars. The problem with that is is that they had children going to Taft Middle School at the cost of seventeen thousand dollars a student. I don't want people to sit here and say, we pay our fair share of taxes. I want people to obey the law and come in the right way. My son-in-law got it done in less than five years. Thank you for your time and I apologize if I seem really angry.
Eduardo? Eduardo?
Hola, muy buenas tardes, miembros del Consilio.
Good evening, sorry, good evening, City Council.
Um de igual manera quiero volver a a comentar este el buen trabajo que está haciendo eh nuestra mayor pro tem, Laura.
I would like to recognize the great job that our mayor pro tem Laura is doing.
Y sé el gran trabajo que es estar en esa silla, todos y cada uno de ustedes como miembros del Consilio.
And I know the um extensive work and and work that is required of you sitting as council.
Uh yo soy hijo de eh padres, um agricultores, ganaderos en México.
I am the son of um agriculture workers in Mexico.
Yes. Igual yo nací en México y sé eh de viva experiencia lo que estamos viviendo en la actualidad.
I was born in Mexico and I have lived experience of what we are experiencing now.
Mi padre fue durante tres años alcalde de la ciudad donde nosotros vivíamos.
My father was during some years the mayor of the town we're from.
Y sé lo que es desvelarse, lo que es separarte de tu familia y lo que es enfocarte en el beni- en el bienestar de tu uh de tu.
Comunidad.
Comunidad.
And I know what it takes to be away from your family, the long hours, and to be focused on improving the quality of life of your community.
Por eso quiero de igual manera felicitarles a ustedes su gran trabajo que están logrando.
And for that, I would like to recognize you for the work that you are doing.
Estar en el lado correcto de la historia cuesta.
To be on the right side of the story costs.
Y el trabajo no siempre la gente va a estar de acuerdo o feliz con lo que decidamos.
And with the work, not everyone is going to be okay with the decisions we make.
Pero agradezco mucho el trabajo que hacen aunque de vez en cuando también como organización no estemos de acuerdo.
I do appreciate the work that is being done, even though at times we may not be on the same page.
Es todo lo que tengo que decir. Muchas gracias.
And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. No further speaker cards?
I wasn't here at the last council meeting, I obviously. But I did uh view it uh online. And I want to, when we came to the, after the um non-agenda items and you came to the part where you turned to the attorney and she was going to speak and she was going to speak on the ICE issue or that um and then all of a sudden, the city clerk was calling people up for public comment. And and it kinda threw me, you know, that they were having a public comment with the attorney. I had never seen that before. So I went to the agenda and um it didn't, okay, two words. It's your responsibility to make it easy and understandable for the public to come and stand here and address you. There's two words that will make it easier: public comment. Now, we went through a tur- very turmoil era not long ago with the last elected mayor that we had, trying to um restrict our voices, cut down our voices, clumping categories together, giving us two minutes to speak on up to five different categories. It was very frustrating, very sad to see um how our voice was um being curtailed. So now our voices have opened up a bit and um on the instructions under public comment on the agenda, it says the IE, which I assume that's kinda like and other things too, it lists the uh that we would have the three minutes to speak on the consent calendar, appointments, new business, closed sessions, and the IE, which is other things. Well, you know, other things is very nowadays is very different, like appointments that you had today. Public, public comment, you know, different things you're allowing public comment. What it is is I want, under every single category, that you are going to allow public comment to put those words. Now, on the weekend before the council meeting, I don't know if others do it, but I pull up the agenda. I pull up the agenda to see what's on it, to see if there's anything that I wanna address. But I want thou's two little words, two tiny little words, public comment, under every single topic that you are gonna allow us to speak so that people will know before they get here, you know, that they're gonna have that opportunity. Okay, thanks.
Did you?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I really have to say this, if I may. May I, please? Thirty seconds?
Did you already speak? If we let, yeah, if we let you speak, then we gotta give everyone else another chance.
We're sorry, but if we.
Sorry, you've already spoken on this section.
Everyone else will be taking second chances.
I'll wait till my turn comes.
Alex?
She's already spoken on this section. Adam?
You said the speaker cards were not. I thought it was open to public comment. It used to be in the past.
So good evening, Mayor Benning Court and City Council. Um I'm gonna get a lot of flak here. Everybody's gonna scream at me right now, but I'm completely against what everybody's been saying on the on the Freedom Coalition side. I stayed until the last, the very end of the meeting last uh time and I didn't hear Olson say anything bad about the ICE agents. In fact, he was saying that he was trying to protect them. Um he waited until public comments were finished to actually speak like he's doing today. He was following the quorum and many in the audience were not. That's simple facts. Opinions are meant to be changed. Facts are facts. The fact is that Donald Trump stated in the beginning of his president's or his campaign that there was less than two million illegal immigrants. By the time he was getting close to his election, it was somewhere in between twenty to twenty-five million illegal immigrants. Where he came up with that number, who knows? There's not even twelve million illegal immigrants living in uh the United States. The fact of the matter is that.
We we can't have outbursts from the audience. I'm sorry, but people were respectful when you spoke. Please be respectful.
So the fact of the matter is that illegal immigrants do pay over a hundred billion dollars in taxes yearly and they don't receive any of those benefits. Those benefits go to Social Security, Medicare, and uh other benefits that are that any American citizen is privy to. Illegal immigrants have zero claim to that uh tho- those benefits, even though they pay over a hundred billion dollars yearly into it. I can't, and I don't think anybody can definitively prove that Donald Trump is racist, but we also have to remember that the other half of the United States didn't vote for him. And many who did vote for him were casting their vote because they didn't want somebody like Kamala in presidency. It wasn't a vote in support of Trump. And many of them will tell you that. As a matter of fact, some of those who were pardoned during the January sixth uh event specifically stated that they believed that Trump was acting faux-harcishly because they didn't believe that they should be pardoned for the, what they did. The fact of the matter is that when it comes to occurrences like the January sixth, Donald Trump took nearly three and a half hours to call off the rioters and tell them to leave the Capitol alone. Afterwards, he said they were fine people on both sides. When it comes to news media, you have Fox, you have PBS, and you also have uh independent pundits. You have many people who are out there looking at other sides of facts and giving them to you. So if anybody, sure, if anybody has only one media source, you can't trust them. But when you have facts coming from all media sources, I just don't understand why everybody's so, this is so false. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could please, once again, ask the audience to please not shout from your seats. People were respectful when you were speaking. We have rules of behavior in this this chambers. Please, please don't, don't do that. I really don't wanna have to ask you again. Anyone else? No, if you've already spoken, you don't, you don't get to speak again, no.
I've been able to speak four or five times. I've.
No, you you've already spoken on non-agendized comments.
One of these is regarding an agenda item.
We've already done consent calendar. We've already done non-agendized items.
I didn't get called. I put in a speaker card for an agenda item and I never got called.
So on four point one, it's just a presentation.
It's still on agenda.
You wanna speak on four point one? You wanna speak on four point one?
Is it chimbo?
Is that what you're telling me?
I told you that four point one was just a presentation.
You're gonna comment on the presentation.
We don't have public comments on the.
On the chimbo center? That's.
Yes.
Okay, what would you like to say about chimbo center?
I agree with Mr. Loa that I thought Palmdale had a kind of a cultural type of theme they wanted to present. And this new building looks like it belongs on the runway of the aerospace industry. And with a beautiful Ponce de Clon square that gets used frequently, it totally clashes. And I I've been in probably, I'm thinking at least four different nonprofits that use the chimbo for meetings because we needed something for no cost. And then there was a year that everybody got kicked out because they couldn't afford them and there was only one night that was free. So um this new design is, looks like I was expecting an airplane to be landing. It totally clashes with that. And since I do have three minutes, um regarding the women that I saw on Sierra Highway, that was just one day where I saw two black ladies. There've been plenty, there've been other days where I've seen women of all different colors. And sometimes in the wintertime, I'm surprised some of them are not blue because they're so scandalously clad. I know when I get cold, I'm turning, I'm turning all different colors that I'm not now. I'm turning yellow and and I, cuz I've worked outdoors. I and 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 almost this kinda white. So I understand that. And when I was in junior high, specifically sixth grade, I was um dealing with.
I enjoyed learning about Central and South America, the Incas and the Maya's and the Aztecs. And those main Indian tribes were very.
Mayor, members of the city council, may I remind us that we've already gone through our public sp- comment and uh we should keep the moving, the meeting moving forward, please.
Thank you.
Keep the meeting what?
Thank you for your comments, but for, you've already spoken on chimbo, so thank you.
I have three, I have forty seconds left.
To speak about chimbo.
When we've done this before, we've got a minute.
Ma'am, you you already spoke for three minutes on non-agendized comments.
Madam City Attorney, can you just opine? I think that maybe we can clarify the 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 rules of conduct here in public comment.
So you get three minutes for each section. So all the other sections have closed. The last one was non-agenda public comments. I believe there is comments on closed session and that would be the only remaining portion to comment. But you're not allowed to go up there twice per.
Section.
Section, yes.
So the public comment has not been closed on non-agendized items yet, right? So if there's anybody else who wants to speak on non-agendized item who has not spoken, this is now your opportunity. If not.
All right, seen then, we're gonna close the public comments on non-agendized items. Now.
The correct twelve point one.
Yeah, I'm looking, um yeah, but I I we have another public comment set the presentation of city attorney. So but. All right, so let's go ahead and do um council reports. Andrea, would you like to begin? Announcements and requests for future agenda items.
Sure. I, my, my report um has been filed, so if anybody's interested in all the events that I've been to, it's on, it's on public record. Um a couple of follow-ups in terms of future requests for agenda items. There's been a lot of conversation about, for over the past, what, six months at to a year about um voting at large for mayor. Last council meeting, we had a significant discussion, lively discussion on how we move forward. Um one of my suggestions was, why don't we just reach out to the attorney who um who uh litigated the original Palmdale matter? Um seemed like a simple first step that wouldn't cost us any money. I um requested, I called him uh and requested that he um come and do a presentation on the CVRA, on his perspective on status of of the the lawsuit, on potential options that the city could explore. I think that we may have had consensus on, that might be a good at least first step so that we can get everybody on the same page on what what um what may or may not be possible. So I'd like to formally now request, and I guess if we're gonna do this by by motion, I would like to formally request that on the next council agenda. I thought it was gonna be on this agenda. Unfortunately, it was not. Um but I'd like to make a motion that uh we pre- we include a CVRA presentation from Mr. Kevin Shankman onto our next council agenda.
So do we have to take a vote for that to get on the agenda?
Yes.
So.
Yes, and I guess it would also be subject to Mr. Shankman's availability cuz if he says no, then I guess he's not coming. So.
I I absolutely, I could help. He was ready to come to this one because I thought we just had general consensus, but we can formally vote.
Andrea's making the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Let's call for the vote.
Voice vote.
Oh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
So we have a quorum on that one?
Motion passes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's one. Thank you for that. Um uh and then my second item is the last council meeting, I also requested that on fu- this agenda or future agendas, that we um include a status update on several personnel investigations that are ongoing. Um first, the city manager, there was a a financial fraud forensic accounting RFP that was issued. We haven't received an update on that as, you know, I think we're accountable to our taxpayers and we should get to the bottom of where these investigations um are going or not going in a timely manner. So I'd like that to come back, whether it's closed session, open session, you guys can decide. I don't know if we wanna do these vote votes individually.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a motion for, to agendize either in in closed or open, however the city attorney deems.
I think we should uh include them all at once. And if that's the motion, I would second it.
For for closed session or open session?
I mean, the RFP was issued publicly, so.
They should be in closed session.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I haven't finished about what they all are, but um since the city manager, the city attorney, Harper Barnes, um we voted to to keep him uh keep, create a firewall on all personnel matters related to the city of Palmdale. However, um I have learned that he is still continuing to be involved in personnel matters. Um so I'd like to discuss that. Also, um his role in keeping a lot of this information from this council. We are oversight over the city manager and we, the information was withheld from us for over a year, so I'd like to have that be part of the conversation. Again, I don't know if this is all one lump motion or not.
We can make it one motion.
Okay. And then um the investigation that we initiated against uh council member Loa, we haven't received a status update. I think he's entitled to it. We all need to know what is going on. Um so that, you know, due process requires timely um addressing of these matters. So just, we just need a status update. So where are we on that? As well as the one on myself, last council meeting, there were a lot of allegations uh made about me, particularly one um that I would just like to put to bed about an alleged incident that happened at an Aleo, uh an Aleo event. I've spoken, I had to do my own research, uh because you took it in an um of yourself to go and and do research. You contacted directly a council member and asked her and was inquiring for information about me. I've, I've now spoken to her. She says she wants no part of this and she didn't say what you said she said. Um you suggested there was some physical altercation. None of. You suggested there was some physical altercation, none of that happened. She wants no part of any of this. You also suggested there were attorneys present at this incident. I have an email from a licensed attorney, who was right there with me and her, that says that your recitation of the matters is completely off-base. So I just submit this if you want, for the record, so we can just put that to bed. And then, so that's all the investigations. Do we want to vote on all of them together?
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to lump them together all in one closed session. So we have a motion and a second. Can we call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Motion passes, you announced.
Good.
Great. Translation, tonight, we've, I've been, I think I made that motion maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago. We've been talking about utilizing some sort of software in order to be able to implement that. Part of the reason why tonight, translation was difficult, I know that we, we put on our agenda that you can put, submit a request 72 hours in advance, but now that our council meetings were moved to Tuesday, our agendas are posted on Friday, there is no staff here on Friday, how does somebody submit one before Tuesday? It's, it's, it was difficult when our council meetings were on Wednesday, it is now almost impossible, now that our meetings are on Tuesday and our agendas are posted on Friday. So I just want to underscore the importance and the need of having translation available. People don't need to necessarily speak at our, at our public comment podium, but at least they should be able to sit and listen and participate actively in our local governance. And then lastly, Mr. Sardestat, I don't know, he's not here anymore, but he's, he's a dear friend, but he did make a quick statement about unions, and I just want to say, over the long term, he said that, you know, union jobs tend to cost the city money. Over the long term, I disagree. Union workers and jobs done under union supervision end up being well-done. They save us money by avoiding additional liability in terms of workplace hazards, in terms of untrained labor actually on the job. So from my perspective, investments in, in labor projects and in projects governed by our CWA, Community Workforce Agreement, are important, and I support them wholeheartedly, our Community Workforce Agreement, so that there is no confusion. Also, it's not just labor jobs. We designate a certain percentage of those to be local jobs under our CWA, and apprenticeship opportunities for local workers, training opportunities. So there's a lot of benefits to, to those labor projects, and so I just, I think it was unfair, maybe, at least from my perspective, to sort of categorize all labor jobs as just costly for the sake of being labor jobs. I'm, I've been an avid supporter of, of the CWA and all of our trades, so I just wanted to close with that. Thanks.
I think we're all very supportive of the Community Workforce Agreement. And obviously, yesterday, having been Labor Day, there were rallies all around the nation celebrating the working class, the workers, which is entirely appropriate. And we are very supportive of that here in the city of Palmdale and have been for quite a while. And so, for, during the month of August, I attended a special city council meeting on August 1st, I attended the Palmdale Sheriff's Boosters meeting on August 5th, the regular city council meeting, the National Night Out at Ponce de Clon Square, TLC at the Palmdale Amphitheater Summer Concert Series, the regular city council meeting, and the AV, the Illinois Valley Fair JPA Board of Directors meeting. Those were the things I did that last month.
Do you have a request for future agenda items?
No, I'm good. I think we've got our hands full already.
Okay, Mr. Olson?
Yeah, sure. My information report is filed, so I'll just move on to address a couple of points that were made here tonight. What got me to my level of frustration last week was the continued outbursts, the continued not allowing other people to have their turn. You did it again several times tonight. When you spoke at the podiums, other members in this audience gave you respect. They were silent, they did not interrupt you. When they spoke, you had to be reprimanded several times. This is the frustration. I never said you broke laws, I say you refuse to respect our rules decorum. You did it again tonight. You continue to do it, it's a pattern. So that causes frustration. You said that, Mayor Pro Tem Bettencourt said that everybody's welcome to speak, and when a member said that she has the right to her opinions and they should be respected, you said yes, you agreed with that, except for when anybody of color comes up to speak. Then you don't agree with it. You said, it happened several times tonight, the mayor had to object to put an end to it. There were things said tonight, like, well, the reason they're speaking is because they want our money to help with illegal immigration activity. That's an assumption because they're of color. You said, you said, if somebody did roll their eyes or interrupt, I'm sure it's because they said something ridiculous. You're making an assumption, just like you're accusing me of making assumptions about why the eyes were rolled. That's hypocrisy. You said it's not racist if they're illegal. Come on. Come on. You know... See, this, this is it. You don't want to... This is the point, right? You have to respect everybody's thoughts and opinions, and you're continuing to refuse to do it. You called me a coward. You know, I also remember nine, see, there they go. I also remember 9/11, because I was in the military at the time, and I ended up joining Homeland Security, and I slept very little the years to follow. So if you think I'm a coward, I would like to submit to you my bio. Take a read, because every time my country asked me to stand up, I did. When my state wants me to serve, I'm there. I'm here for my city, and I'm here for every resident of this city regardless. And so all I'm asking is you give them the same respect to say what they need to say. The reason I waited until everybody left, because this is the appropriate time for me to speak. You guys weren't in the room because you don't care about what I have to say. Obviously, you leave the room before it's our time. When you come in and you demand statements and you demand action, hang out to the appropriate time of the agenda to hear those statements or to see what our thoughts are.
The meeting was ending.
There you go. You know what? I stand by what I said.
Okay, so for my report, it has been filed, and I would like to ask for the, at the next meeting, perhaps we can go over the committee assignments and the MADDY Act, if that's all right?
Second, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
If that's a motion, and we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so we'll do that next, next meeting, which will be in October, I believe. All right.
Yeah, also, can we, can the city manager explain to the public why our second meeting in September has been canceled?
Sure. Mr. City Manager, could you explain to the public why we don't have a second meeting in September?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council, we will be in observance of our fallen officer. We will be at the sheriff's station on that day, where they will be having a remembrance of our officer.
That's great.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to go to the presentation by City Attorney.
That's me. Good evening again, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council members. Tonight, I have for you on closed session, items number 13.1 and 13.2, and we can convene back there whenever you're ready.
Before we go back, this is the time for public comments on closed session, items 13.1 and 13.2. Do we have any speaker cards for those two items?
No speaker cards on this side.
Anybody without a speaker card want to speak on 13.1 or 13.2? Seeing then, we will close public comments and we will adjourn to closed session, and then we'll be back out. Okay, everyone is back, so we're going to go ahead and have an announcement by the City Attorney.
Good evening again, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council members. For number 13.1, there was no reportable action. For number 13.2, the council voted 4-0 to authorize a city attorney to bring back a contract for Mr. Sal Mendez to be the interim city manager. And that's it.
Thank you, and with that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting to October 7th, 2025, right here in the council chambers at 5:00 PM. Thank you all for waiting. Good night.
Good night.